Good afternoon. This workshop meeting of the Socorro ISD Board of Trustees will come to order, please. The date is Tuesday, September 23rd, and the time is 3:03, and we have a confirmed quorum. Thank you for joining us for this meeting, both in person and online via our YouTube stream. The full recording of the meeting will be available on YouTube and archived through the board website, where viewers have the option of watching the meeting with closed captions translated in multiple languages. Gracias por acompañarnos en esta reunión tanto en persona como en línea a través de nuestra transmisión de YouTube. La grabación completa de la reunión estará disponible en YouTube y se archiverá a través del sitio web de la junta, donde los espectadores tienen la opción de ver la reunión con subtítulos traducidos a varios idiomas. Continuing then, will everyone please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Didn't have any speakers sign up for public comment today, so we'll continue then with the board workshop. Joining us and leading us today will be Mr. Ben Mackey. He's our LSG coach. Mr. Mackey.
Great to be here. Good evening, y'all. It's been a long time since May, I think it was, the last time we were all here together in the same setup. So exciting to be back. I know you all have accomplished a lot in these last few months. Congratulations on your new full-time superintendent. Glad to have you, Superintendent Vasquez. Today is the day that I think most of us have been waiting for since we started last November, and is probably the single most important job of a board, is to set priorities. What are the most important things that Socorro ISD is going to accomplish, and how do we maintain that promise to our community? Both in terms of student outcome goals and also those other values that are important. And that is what we are going to do today. The hard work of taking seven different opinions and thoughts with what all our community said over the last year, with what Superintendent Vasquez recommended, and how do we really distill that down to something that we as a board are going to commit to? So to begin this process, the first item on our agenda is kind of a review of this data. We're not going to spend a ton of time here, but I want to first start with a question for you. If you will take two minutes quietly, if you could only look at one metric, that would be the most important thing that's top of mind for you right now? Third grade reading, balanced budget, whatever it happens to be? What's the one most important metric for Socorro ISD in your own mind? If you got to choose that yourself as a team of one, take a few minutes, write down, what would that one metric be? And then we'll come back and we'll share what we have. Only get one metric, anything out there, you'd only get reports on this one thing, what is that one thing that would be most important to you? There is no right answer. And in reality, this changes a lot, you know? Might be important now, and then two months from now, there might be something else. So what's that thing right now? All right, now I'm going to invite everyone to share theirs. We're going to start with you, Superintendent, since you live and breathe this work every day. If you could only look at one metric, one thing that tells you what's most important to Socorro ISD right now, what would that be?
That would be our fund balance.
Fund balance, okay. Thank you. President Nahra, what was yours?
Considering that the board's focus should be student outcomes, I selected third grade reading.
Third grade reading, all right. Thank you. Mr. Guerra?
Budget.
Budget. Specifically what?
Financial stability.
What would be that metric? Did you have a number or something like that that would tell you if it's financially stable?
I'm sorry.
Did you have like a number that you would look at, like fund balance or something like that, or?
Well, I guess all of it's in general. I'll put together budget fund balance, because enrollment, but all that entitles.
Oh, you try to get a bunch of metrics in here. Enrollment, budget, fund balance, all right. Thank you. Trustee Woodcraft, what was yours?
Paul Stolman, financial stability.
Okay. Trustee Rodriguez?
I think mine is more tied with academics than anything else. I put number of A-rated campuses, but I only say that because there's a magnitude of work that takes place behind the scenes to accomplish that. So for me, that's the core of our institution.
Great, thank you. See Smith?
I put child success.
As defined by?
Like student outcome.
Did you have a particular one in mind, or all of them? All right. Trustee Gardea?
I put academics, but maintaining our academic strength.
Did you have a specific metric in mind, or general?
I didn't. I wasn't sure how specific I needed to be, but I think third grade is what we had decided.
Thank you. And Trustee Macias, bring us home.
Yes, for me, it was more, it's not so much graduation rate, but actually tracking our cohorts from elementary to middle school to high school to truly see how many students from the time they're with us actually graduate or complete.
Okay. Cohort, graduation, or completion rate. So what we saw here is we had eight people, all shared their individual ones. I don't know about you, but I heard, well, there was one or two that might be the same. Most of them were very different. And this is always the case, that these will be different, and then if I were to ask you that same question six months from now, I can almost guarantee you some of those would have changed. And this so often is what superintendents and teams have to compete with, is like, things are changing. And so there is intense value in a board coming together, really thinking about these. Should we think about success as A-rated campuses, or in terms of third grade reading, or in terms of cohort tracking, or some combination thereof? And just getting crystal clear to say, this is what winning looks like in Socorro ISD based on everything we've learned? And then turning that to the superintendent, saying, now we know what winning looks like, we're going to see if you won the game. And that's what we're going to do today. So actually picking through all of these things, whether it is about the student achievement side, or the budget side, and saying like, well, what does, when we say financial stability, what, that can mean a lot of different things to a lot of different people. Let's get clear on what does winning look like for financial stability, so there's no misunderstandings about what success looks like. So that's what we're going to get to do today. I want to first ground us in two things that you have in front of you. I believe you have these folders. The first one is if you think back, and we've slept since then, this board did a lot of community listening, that I know a lot of people participated in, both as a participant and actually doing and leading. This was again the summary from what your community said. So if you look at that second page, just to kind of reorient everyone to it, the second page says, it's around the community vision. What are the things that your community is saying it wants most for its kids? These are about from the thousand-some people that responded. And again, we have them bucketed and ordered by frequency. So at the top was academics, around core subjects, strong focus on literacy, followed by math, and to a lesser extent, social studies and science. That was quickly followed by college, social skills, career, and so on down. So it gives you a sense of where your community was at when they responded to this. You'll get to marry this with everything you hear day in and day out from constituents that you heard on your campaigns, et cetera. This is one data point to look at when we think about, what do we want to focus on? We obviously would like to make sure that what the community says is the vision we represent and what we're going towards. But how we define college readiness or academic readiness, that's the conversation that we need to do here. If you flip one more page past that, you'll see the values. We'll get to that on the second half of today, around what are those values that we're trying to protect? These are the things that aren't necessarily academic outcomes for our kids. These are those other things that are important. I think top of it was, if I remember correctly, staff experiences, followed by finances, followed by administrative salaries, followed by student experience, and so on down. So again, big buckets, but again, what this board will have to do is define what does, if we want to say that we're going to protect the value of finances, what are we looking at? What does that mean? Because there's so many different interpretations. So that's one element we're going to look at. I'm going to encourage you to use that as a reference throughout today. Then I'll take you to the other half of this, because what our community wants is absolutely critical and necessary, but it is not the only thing we can look at. We also have hired a superintendent, and they have hired a staff of experts who do this work day in and day out. And so if you think back to May, superintendent put together an analysis that he and his team went through. The first couple pages show you all the data sources they looked at. They see day in and day out on the campuses, what are the highest priorities, what are the needs, et cetera. And if you go all the way to the back two pages, you will see their recommendation for goals and guardrails. So based on everything that they've seen here, they recognize that some of the, if they were to choose it themselves, some of the key areas would be CCMR readiness, third grade assessment, reading at meets, meets on all state assessments, middle school math, and third grade assessments on math. And then on the values on the back page, they have some of these other ones. Financial solvency, health plan sufficiency, district operations, student experiences, satisfaction, and stakeholder trust and support. So again, these are just two different things to consider with your own experiences as we work through this process. So let me pause there. I kind of gave an overview there. Would love to see if anyone had any thoughts about those, if this is jogging your memory from May, if you've kind of had experiences over the past few months that have kind of confirmed or changed any of these things. I'd be open the floor to any questions or reflections that anybody on the board has as we think about those documents.
Mr. Mackey, one of the things that I think we learned from the surveys and that we've actually put into action, and when I say me, we, I mean the superintendent, is community meetings. So we are, we just started our next round of community updates for the fall of 2025, and the information that's included here is very familiar, because this is what we're going back and sharing with the community. We're sharing what the community shared with us, vision, values, qualities in the superintendent. And so, yes, it looks very, very familiar. And I anticipated we were to do the survey again, because we're at a different point in the district than we were, you know, the first time we did this. I imagine some of these might change priority, but there's still consistency. We still have, you know, for example, financial solvency is still a concern. Student outcomes will always, you know, be a priority. And either building, maintaining, and committing to stakeholder trust, those are three that I think regardless of where we are, or what time of year it is, et cetera, those will always be important.
Yep. Thank you for that. So what I hear you saying is, a lot of these things, we've already taken some actions based on what we learned here. We've already having community meetings, we're already talking about some of these things. That's awesome. That's exactly the purpose of these things. How do we have a continually improving cycle of this? What I also heard is, a lot of these things are still top of mind. They're not going to be fixed and solved and something onto the next one in a couple months. Some of these take a lot of time to really build that trust back, and that's, that's good. I think to recognize the reality that we don't change systems in a night. It takes a long time to build the trust and show those things. But then also, to your point, we need to do this as an ongoing process, because things do change, and we do have different priorities, and that's going to be recognized in this process as well. So thank you for that. Any other comments, wonderings, reflections?
One of the things that I noticed is that a lot of the things that we have, that we received as feedback, we're doing great things. So for me, it was more, how do we communicate, over-communicate, and make sure that we have that elevator speech at any time, that any of us, especially myself, that I could share some of the great things that I know that you shared during those community meetings as far as, you know, we are the most A-rated campuses, we have these many, and, you know, how we were the top out of our entire region in certain areas. I would love to have those talking points, and then communicate that with our teachers, with our parents consistently, so that in El Paso, it's word of mouth. That's our biggest communication. In that way, when we're out, you know, on a Saturday or Sunday at Taquisa, we're talking about the things that we're doing, because many of the things here, we're doing great things, we have systems, we just don't know all about them. So that was my reflection.
No, that's great. We're doing a lot of things here, but it'd be really helpful to even have more specificity to what we can share collectively. And what's the difference between a board that if we all take everyone's individual thing, that if we have Trustee Rodriguez out here talking about all the things we're doing aligned with A campuses, and we have President Nahra out here talking about third grade reading, and then we have Trustee Macias talking about cohorts, and we have Trustee Guerra talking about budget? How is that different, and what impact does that have versus this board coming together and saying, here are the four things that we as a board are going to focus on, and all talking about those four things? What is different in those two situations?
Just the level of communication.
How so?
Because four times 10 is 40, times four times one, and then the exponential growth. So same message, and cohesively, it'll naturally spread.
I think that it also signals to Trustee Macias' point, a level of collaboration, that we were able to compromise, that we were able to exchange ideas, and this is the final product that us as colleagues came up with.
Yes. It is, it symbolizes collaboration. Doesn't mean that we all got everything we wanted, but we did the hard political work here to decide on what that focus is, because if we have that focus collectively, even if it's not what exactly I would have chosen by myself, or someone else would have chosen, we as a board can then communicate it. To your point, you have seven voices communicating the progress, as opposed to one person communicating one progress over here, and someone else communicating progress over there. You also send the message to Superintendent Vasquez and the entire team, we know what winning looks like, that's what we're going to focus on and hold accountable. Thank you. Thank you for engaging in that. Anything else?
I think, as you said, more or less, everybody gave a different answer, right? So we could say that it's seven different priorities, and if everything's a priority, nothing is, or, so if we all can collaboratively come together and determine exactly what our priorities are and focus on those, then, then you have a synergy.
Yep.
You know, and if we're all relaying a consistent message out in the community, then that message gets further. It's the very same reason why, you know, some companies spend so much money to advertise during the Super Bowl, because you have a single message that goes out to a whole bunch of people real quick. And so if all our messaging is consistent, and we're all highlighting or sharing the exact same successes, the exact same priorities, then everybody knows what we should be focused on, everybody knows what we're measuring, and then we're sharing those successes, and the message from us carries forward even further, because we're all being consistent. Those who hear it will carry that same message too. It just grows exponentially.
If you've read the book, The Four Disciplines of Execution About Leadership, there's basically four steps to, actually, no, sorry, the wrong book. It's The Advantage, Four Steps to Effectively Running an Organization. The first one is to have a strong team, the right people in the right seats on the bus. Socorro ISD has this. You have your team of eight here, you've got staff here, you've got all of this. The next three are all communicating. Over-communicate clarity, be clear about it, and continue to, like, clarity, clarity, clarity is the other three. And that is exactly what this allows the system. When you all get together and say, this is what we're clear on and what we want to see, naturally, the superintendent and team will be able to focus on that and be able to recognize distractions when they come up. To your other point about this focus, more areas of focus automatically relate, or is less focus on any one thing. If you have one goal, what percentage of time can you expect your team to focus on that goal?
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent. As soon as you add a second goal, what is reasonable to think they'll spend on either goal?
Fifty-fifty.
Fifty-fifty. Automatically, you have cut your focus on one goal. So if reading is our one goal, and we say we want to have a reading goal, we would expect the superintendent to spend all their time on there. As soon as I add math, I should expect that its focus will be cut. Now, naturally, it doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to spend all of their time. Superintendent, regardless of whether this board sets a goal around science explicitly, something tells me your team is still going to focus on science to make sure that those tests kind of go. But think about this in terms of, it's so often, as we get into this today, it's going to feel, there's going to be this pressure to add more, because we want to see it represented. And I will encourage this board to think about, is adding that additional thing worth not focusing as much on some other areas? And think about it in this terms of loss as opposed to adding. And that'll just be a constant thing. And just because you don't set a priority around something, again, it does not mean the superintendent and team is not going to do it. It just means that there are other higher-leveraged things that we got to get right first. Just because we set a priority around budget, and we don't set one around busing and transportation, doesn't mean we're going to ignore this. It just means that budget is our first priority, and then as we get that under control, we'll start to look at it. All right, well, let's get into it. We will move to the second part of our agenda, which is actually setting these priorities. We will start, we're going to do this in two parts. We're going to start with the goals, the academic, what do we want kids to be able to know and do? Some of you have already been through the two-day that we'll get to do in a few months, some of you it's brand new. But let's just kind of get everyone on the same page about what goals are. What do you all know about goals? What do you remember or know about, what is a goal?
They need to be smart.
Yes, it needs to be smart. And what we mean by smart is what?
Well-defined.
Well-defined. What else? Measurable.
Attainable.
Attainable. Feasible.
Timeline.
There needs to be a timeline. And specific, what's the other one?
There we go.
We, why is, why do we say we need it, we want our goals to be met? Why is it necessary that our goals are measurable?
Make sure that there's growth, so we can make sure that it's working, it's effective.
Yeah. We know what, if we made it or not. If we say academics will increase, increase by what? And what we see so often happen is a superintendent comes, and they're excited to show you about the increase and why it was an increase. And then the board says, well, that's not as much as I meant with an increase, but nobody knows because we weren't specific about it. Why does it need to be attainable? Don't we want all of our kids to read? Shouldn't we be at 100% next year? Why must it be attainable?
Kind of the same idea as realistic. That way, it doesn't, it doesn't seem that we're failing. They have to be stretch goals, but yet attainable, so we have that level of success.
Yeah. Attainable, so we can have a level of success. It should stretch us, but it should be attainable. Why else must, why else would it not be a good idea to set an unattainable goal on a short timeframe? What would that do to the system?
I think it might overwhelm it to begin with, but then, which is that, depending on what the goal is, I mean morale?
Yep.
You know, if it's unattainable, at some point, we'll just throw your hands in the air and give up.
Yeah.
So even current performance suffers.
Yep. There's a real cost. I mean, there is a benefit if I, as a trustee, and I have felt this as my, in my own experience about, yeah, I want to set super-aggressive goals, because that may, that's going to be like, I can go back to my community and say, look at these aggressive goals we set. But there's a cost to that, because if it's not actually, if it's not challenging but attainable, people will throw their hands up and say, this is too much, or the pressure will become too much, there'll be too much pressure forced down, and what this board should think about, as we set these goals, if they're attainable, we're really thinking about and asking Superintendent Vasquez to make sure that that, whenever that goal is cascades throughout the organization, everyone should feel that pressure and that challenge, but also the ability to achieve it when we make that growth for kids. Anything else we remember, our goals?
That we have to have the ability to measure, the ability to set smaller step goals to where, when we reach it. That way, we're always reflecting, seeing what's working, and adjusting if necessary.
Yes, there's got to be room for adjustment. So this board is going to set goals that need to be measurable, there needs to be some way to measure it. And don't get me wrong, I am not saying it has to be a standardized test. I've seen boards create whole new measures, but it does need to be measurable, so we know if we actually got there. And then we need to be able to, once we get clear on what winning looks like, what's that goal, superintendent and their team are going to be tasked with saying, well, how are we going to know in September if we're on track or off track for this? How are we going to know in December? How are we able to share that publicly, so we can have a real conversation about we're on track, and here's why, or we're off track, and here's what we need to do differently? That is what builds this trust with the community, is what we're seeing. Everything's not rosy all the time. We're actually having real conversations about what's working, what's not working, and how we're moving together on improving this. The last thing that we didn't touch on here is that, as far as we're talking about, goals are related to what students know and can do. There are other things that are important. You can't make sure that students know and do things if you don't have great teachers in the classroom, if you don't have a budget, if you don't have all these other things. But a budget in and of itself is not the reason for schools existing, it's to be able to provide education. So for this segment, we are only going to think about what students know or can be able to do. In segment two, we'll think about what are those other things that must also be true, and we're going to look at both of those together. So what we're going to do here in a moment, and then I will pause and see if there's any questions, is, you all have plenty of ideas in your head, you've already started to come up with at least one of these. You're going to use the two documents you have, feel free to look at them, pull them as you see fit. You're going to individual, I'm going to give you about five minutes to do this, you're going to come up with three to five goal areas that you think are most important. These must be ways that you would actually measure and look at if students are learning or not. Please don't tell me student achievement. Tell me like, what do you look at? Like, is it third grade reading? Or is it kids going to college? Or is it any of these things like that? Try to be as specific as possible. Tonight, we are not trying to actually figure out what the goal numbers are going to be. We're not going to say from X to Y, et cetera. First, we got to get clear if we care about third grade reading, or is it fifth grade math, or is it whatever else? That's what we're going to try to get clear on tonight. So at the end of this segment, we're going to walk away with three to five goals that are basically like third grade reading at the meets rate, or ACT and SAT achievement, or A campuses, or whatever you all come up with. That's what we want to end tonight with, because then what's going to happen is we're going to turn that back over to the superintendent and his team, they're going to go pull all of that data and propose like, okay, here's where our baseline is, here is where the direction we're going to go, and then the board will have another conversation on that. So the way this will work first is I'm going to have everyone individually work for about five minutes, and just, as you individual, Trustee Rodriguez, what are the three to five most important student outcome metrics that you would prioritize? We're going to have everyone do that, including you, Superintendent. You've already kind of done yours in here, so you might not have to do much. And then we're going to pair you up, and you will then work with a partner. You'll both bring in three to five of these, and now you and a partner, we're going to have to come together to come to one list that you both agree on. And then at that stage, we're going to put them all up here and start to consolidate and kind of work through this process together to come to that set of three to five. So that's how we're going to work, individual first, then I'm going to pair you up, and then we'll all come back together and kind of workshop it together. then we'll all come back together and kind of workshop it together. Are there any questions from the board about the process and what we're going to do before I turn over to Doc?
Just to make sure, because, I mean, I think you heard from half of the board that financial stability is important, but for this round right here, you want them all to be student outcomes, even though that's a priority.
Correct.
Right now, student outcomes.
Yep.
Okay.
So we're again separating out the student outcomes, this is like, we're here for student education, so what, what are these things? Financial stability, absolutely a priority, I don't see any world in which this board comes away not setting that, but that will be on the second part of today, which are those other system outcomes.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions before I let Doc kind of chime in? Doc?
Hey, here's a couple of, you know, Hossaisms for free.
Bless you.
Number one, command decisions are easy to make and hard to implement. Consensus decisions are messy, they take a long time, but implementation is much deeper and faster because you can see your voice in it. And then, but nobody defines consensus except fool, I'm the only fool that is defining consensus. Here's, I got two definitions for consensus. Ryan, it's not your way or my way, but a better way. Here's another way. I may not be, agree with everything in here, but I can live with it. So as you start your, your first do you, you got to put, come up with yours, then as you start negotiating with a peer, and then as you go to the whole group, if more people spent time defining what consensus really is, and really, unless you're in a crisis, every decision should be consensus. If, if, if a school is burning, you better have a, don't call a committee, you get somebody over and fix that, that's a crisis. But if you're in crisis mode, therein lies the problem. You need to be up here operating on the important, not the urgent. And if you do the important right, the urgent will start dissipating. So I'll turn it back over to Ben.
And that is what we're doing today, this is the important. What is the thing that we keep staring at? So again, individually, three to five, no more than five, you don't have to do all five, three to five. What are those key areas that you would say that should be one of our student outcome focused goals? That's what winning looks like for our kids. Give you about five minutes, whenever you are done and you have yours, just give me a thumbs up. Great? Raise your hand if you need a little more time. Okay, carry on. So by now, you should have three to five areas of student outcomes that you think are most important. That's what winning looks like for Socorro ISD. What we're going to do now is we're going to put you with a partner. And you will take your two lists of three to five, my guess tells me there's probably some overlap on that list, but there's probably some things that are different. And you will create one combined list of three to five that you both agree on. And then we're going to come back to this together with four different sets of three to five that we're going to start to workshop through a procedure. For partners, I feel like y'all always sit next to the same people, right? This is the regular dais, isn't it? So I'm just going to randomly go from the gut and start assigning you. Let's do Charles with Paul.
Great choice.
Let's do, let's do Michael with Manny, let's do Ryan with Superintendent Vasquez, and then like we already got Allison Maravella. So you've got chart paper, if you prefer to work with chart paper, feel free. If you prefer just to go sit in a corner and talk about it, I'll be walking around. We're also going to have from our staff, anyone involved in the academics be floating around to answer questions, you might have questions for them. And I'll just be floating around to answer questions, so go on.
Can we use one of those?
Let's, let's do it here first.
Yeah. They are.
Doc, when they come back together?
Mm-hmm. Well, maybe. Yeah. Remember that? It wasn't here. Me neither. But I think what they did is they did like a positive and critical.
Their state that way, it gives us a target.
Okay. Okay. So then I'm going to play. Yes.
Because they're all just having individual. They'll come back together. Okay.
Numerous. What I would think. What I would think. It gives us a target. Okay. Okay. So then I'm going to play. Yes.
Because they're all just having individual. They'll come back together. Okay.
Numerous. What I would think. What I would think. It gives us a target. Okay. Okay. So then I'm going to play. Yes.
Because they're all just having individual. They'll come back together. Okay.
Numerous. What I would think. What I would think. It gives us a target. Okay. Okay. So then I'm going to play. Yes.
Because they're all just having individual. They'll come back together. Okay.
Numerous. What I would think. What I would think. It gives us a target. Okay. Okay. So then I'm going to play. Yes.
Because they're all just having individual. They'll come back together. Okay.
Numerous. What I would think. What I would think. It gives us a target. Okay. Okay. So then I'm going to play. Yes.
Because they're all just having individual. They'll come back together. Okay.
Numerous. What I would think. What I would think. It gives us a target. Okay. Okay. So then I'm going to play. Yes. Because they're all just having individual.
They'll come back together. Okay.
Numerous. What I would think. What I would think. It gives us a target. Okay. Okay. So then I'm going to play. Yes. Because they're all just having individual.
They'll come back together. Okay.
Numerous. What I would think. What I would think. It gives us a target. Okay. Okay. So then I'm going to play. Yes. Because they're all just having individual.
They'll come back together. Okay.
Numerous. What I would think. What I would think. It gives us a target. Okay. Okay. So then I'm going to play. Yes. Because they're all just having individual.
They'll come back together. Okay.
Numerous. What I would think. What I would think. It gives us a target. Okay. Okay. So then I'm going to play. Yes. Because they're all just having individual.
They'll come back together. Okay.
Numerous. What I would think. What I would think. It gives us a target. Okay. Okay. So then I'm going to play. Yes. Because they're all just having individual.
They'll come back together. Okay.
Numerous. What I would think. What I would think. It gives us a target. Okay. Okay. So then I'm going to play. Yes. Because they're all just having individual.
They'll come back together. Okay.
Numerous. What I would think. What I would think. It gives us a target. Okay. Okay. So then I'm going to play. Yes. Because they're all just having individual.
They'll come back together. Okay.
Numerous. What I would think. What I would think. It gives us a target. Okay. Okay. So then I'm going to play. Yes. Because they're all just having individual.
They'll come back together. Okay.
Numerous. What I would think. What I would think. It gives us a target. Okay. Okay. So then I'm going to play. Yes. Because they're all just having individual.
They'll come back together. Okay.
Millions. What I would think. What I would think. It gives us a target. Okay. Okay. So then I'm going to play. Yes. Because they're all just having individual.
They'll come back together. Okay.
Millions. What I would think. What I would think. It gives us a target. Okay. Okay. So then I'm going to play. Yes. Because they're all just having individual.
They'll come back together. Okay.
Millions. What I would think. What I would think. It gives us a target. Okay. Okay. So then I'm going to play. Yes. Because they're all just having individual.
They'll come back together. Okay.
Millions. What I would think. What I would think. It gives us a target. Okay. Okay. So then I'm going to play. Yes. Because they're all just having individual.
They'll come back together. Okay.
Millions. What I would think. What I would think. It gives us a target. Okay. Okay. So then I'm going to play. Yes. Because they're all just having individual.
They'll come back together. Okay.
Millions. What I would think. What I would think. It gives us a target. Okay. Okay. So then I'm going to play. Yes. Because they're all just having individual.
They'll come back together. Okay.
Millions. What I would think. What I would think. It gives us a target. Okay. Okay. So then I'm going to play. Yes. Because they're all just having individual.
They'll come back together. Okay.
Millions. What I would think. What I would think. It gives us a target. Okay. Okay. So then I'm going to play. Yes. Because they're all just having individual.
They'll come back together. Okay.
Millions. What I would think. What I would think. It gives us a target. Okay. Okay. So then I'm going to play. Yes. Because they're all just having individual.
They'll come back together. Okay.
Millions. What I would think. What I would think. It gives us a target. Okay. Okay. So then I'm going to play. Yes. Because they're all just having individual.
They'll come back together. Okay.
Millions. What I would think. What I would think. It gives us a target. Okay. Okay. So then I'm going to play. Yes. Because they're all just having individual.
They'll come back together. Okay.
Millions. What I would think. What I would think. It gives us a target. Okay. Okay. So then I'm going to play. Yes. Because they're all just having individual.
They'll come back together. Okay.
Millions. What I would think. What I would think. It gives us a target. Okay. Okay. So then I'm going to play. Yes. Because they're all just having individual.
They'll come back together. Okay.
Millions. What I would think. What I would think. It gives us a target. Okay. Okay.
All right, if I can have your attention briefly. Seems like some great conversations happening. Hold on. Three things that I would love for you to consider based on where you are. I see a lot of people getting pretty close to our three, four, or five, which seems like great conversations. There's three things I want you to look at what you've written down so far and consider. The first one is consider how broad or not broad your goals are. If it's broad, you're not going to learn anything about it. So I've seen some districts say, "Our goal is all state tests in all subject areas growing from X to Y." You don't learn anything about what specifically matters in that. So if you have broad goals, try to be as narrow as necessary so you actually learn what you want to learn. The second thing is if you have anywhere where you've combined multiple measures. So for instance, if you say, "We care about eighth grade reading and eighth grade math" and put it in one goal, that should actually be two separate goals. Because reading is going to be a whole bunch of different strategies than math. So try to separate out where you have double goals, if you have those. And the third one is if you're in a general area. For instance, I've seen like advanced math is a great one. That's a really necessary goal in a lot of aspects. Try to be specific. What does success look like? What tests are you looking at? Is it a state test? Is it a new thing that we're going to create? If you say CCMR, what are you referring to? Are you referring to the accountability system? Or are you referring to enrolling in college? Are you referring to success in advanced courses? So just try to be as specific as possible. So reflect on that. Carry on. We'll give you a few more minutes until you're done, and then we'll come back together.
Mr. Mackey, so if we, for example, number one. Early literacy, specifically third grade, reading and math. If we separate that, we're going to have six. So that means we need to figure out which one we're going to take off if we still want those two. Okay.
All right. Judging by everyone back at their seats, I think we're ready to go. Thank you all for engaging in that. Okay, so what we're going to do now is I'm going to have each group share out what they talked about. We'll have each group kind of say why they picked what they did. Then we will pause and see if there's any questions. We want to make sure what any group is saying makes sense to everybody else, even if we don't, that's not one of ours. That's fine. We're going to get clear on it. I'm going to be taking notes and reflecting this all in a document. And then, once only after we go through everybody's, will we then look at those, start to combine and narrow them down. But first, we got to get what every group talked about. So I'm going to start with this group. If you all will walk us through each of your five and exactly what you were meaning by that, then we'll get some questions from everybody else. So talk to us about your five priorities.
So do you want to talk about the first three? Because I think we came into two agreements. Those were our shared goals.
So, of course, as we came together, we found that we had, we both had a list of five. But interestingly enough, the first three were almost right in line. What I can attribute that to, I think, is those are the things that we heard were priorities to the community, from the community feedback meetings and the online surveys. So the first one there is early literacy, basically third grade reading star in the meets category. For CCMR?
And before you move on to the next one, I think that that was a priority because we both understand the importance of early childhood development. And I think to Michael's point, what he shared is really that if you're at a reading level, that early on, it really does predict, I guess, your academic success.
Right, if you can't read, then you're not going to be in math. Because good in math, because there's math problems. You're certainly not going to be good in spelling. You're not, you know, so reading really is the foundation. For CCMR, since it's a state accountability measure, and also we heard it from the community, and we're going to use the state measure as, you know, the way the state defines it is how we're going to measure and approve upon it. Although I really did like Ms. Macias's idea of the cohort. And not just, did they graduate? Did they register for, you know, college or join the military or whatever? But did they complete? Like, if they go to a technical college, did they get a license? Or did they get a certification? Did they graduate from college? Did they meet their commitment in the military, et cetera? I don't think we have the ability to measure that accurately, and so that's why we stuck with the state accountability measure. Math achievement in middle school, and we decided on the Algebra I EOC. We're already advanced there, but, you know, again, we heard from the community that middle school performance on state assessments was important, and so that's the one that we picked.
And when developing this one, one of the things, and one of the items that I shared with Michael, was that math readiness is tied to STEM pathways. A pathway that, you know, it's well-known that there is a need for more diversity in it, and so we are a minority-majority district. So that was important.
And then Manny will take on the next two.
Yeah. For number four, we do have attendance. But rather than, rather than just defining it by improving attendance, we specifically put decreasing chronic absenteeism. Because I think that that's a better defined goal. And, you know, we can talk a little bit about what that may be, and I think that's an open-ended discussion. But it targets a specific group. And then finally, we do have special ed outcomes. Improving academic, you know, rates, specifically star rates. One of the determining factors for this was, it was recently shared with us, that while enrollment for the district is decreasing, there is an increase in students receiving special education services. And so that's important.
Great, all right. So five priorities here. Questions or thoughts from anybody else? We want to make sure that these are super crystal clear, that we understand what they are, and even if they may or may not be on our list.
So, the question was, I want to tell Michael to the bus, were we looking at what we thought as a board member, what our five priorities are? Or are we looking at the vision?
So you're putting all of these things together. The vision, like, what the community said is important. We want to make sure we're paying attention to that. So for instance, like, I might look at this and say, "Your first one was early literacy." When I look at what the community said, academics, academic achievement in core subjects, with a strong focus on literacy. So like, that is kind of aligned. But we're not necessarily saying we're just paying attention to this. We're looking at what the community said, what the superintendent and his team said, and what I know from my experience in talking to people as it has changed. So I'm kind of putting all those three things together. We'd like to see all of that represented here in one coherent area.
Mr. Mackey, and then you could see how we, based on the feedback that you provided as we were going through this, we refined them. Because at first, one was reading and math, and we decided that reading was the measure. Attendance and engagement for number four, and, you know, the focus was attendance over engagement.
Yep.
Let's focus on that.
Okay. Great, any other questions? Does all these make sense? Clear? I need that pin. Thank you. All right, sorry. Okay, I have one clarifying question on the number five, special ed outcomes, improved star passing rates. Did you all have any conversation around any particular subjects? Or are we really looking at all subjects for that?
We did have a conversation about that towards the end. Because I did mention to Michael, you know, I was concerned about maybe that being too broad, and if we wanted to specifically tie it into a certain subject. But one of the things that I brought up to Michael is that this is already a targeted group. And so my assumption was that maybe there's room to target it broadly.
Yeah, and that's a great point. It's like where I would push back on saying, "You shouldn't consider saying all subjects, all areas for all kids." That's everybody. By narrowing it to special education, which usually is between, you know, 5% to 20% of your population, now you've already narrowed it. So there is that ability. If you were to focus it even more, you'd have a lot more focus. But that's, you know, you've already done some narrowing there. Last question I have is, you have passing rates. Star, as it currently exists, is does not meets, approaches, meets, and masters. When you say passing rates, were you referring to any particular sets of those?
We meant meets. Meets, yes, sir.
So I'm going to say, I'm going to add this. All right, any other questions? Or Doc, any questions from you? All right, so I have represented up here. We're going to move on to whichever group wants to share their five next. I'm going to put them down here. What I will say is if they already represent it, if you also have early literacy, third grade star meets, we don't need to add it again. But if you, for instance, had a conversation that's, "Yes, we have third grade star, but we care about approaches and meets," we would want to add it as a separate one. You've got to go through that process. So who would like to be next with theirs?
Me and Charles.
All right.
The first one obviously was a CCMR increase.
Yep.
Second was increased third grade assessment in reading and math. Next one was graduation, maintaining the graduation rate, maintaining or increasing the graduation rate. And our last one was, I don't know if we had to track, is closing the gap when tracking our students. We have an early college, early high school, and we wanna make sure that our students attending early high school, early college, we close that gap, but also kids, students that don't go to college or go to trade, closing that gap as well, as we talked about, see if we can close that gap. It's too much.
Closing what gap?
Closing the gap of our students. Either college or trade.
So increasing the amount of students who go to college and trade?
Not, we wanna increase that, but also we wanna close that gap to see, not when they graduate from high school, we're not done with them yet. We wanna make sure they go to college, we wanna see if they finish college, and those that wanna trade, continue that trade, and we can close that gap. There's a way to assess that.
Oh, between those who, so if we graduate 95% of kids, we would like to close the gap between those 95% of kids that graduate, and if only 60% of them go into a trade or a college and stay there?
Maybe post-secondary completion?
That's it, post-secondary, yes.
So like post-secondary completion?
Whether college or trade.
But basically, what happens after they leave us?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
After high school.
Great. All right, so the five, just make sure I captured them correctly. CCMR increase, increased third grade assessment in reading, increased third grade assessment in math, graduation rate and post-secondary completion, college or trade. Is that accurate to what you all shared? Questions from the rest of the board?
Yeah, for me, so do, do, do we want to recap or capture F again, because I think essentially that's what Manny and I are saying in B. G aligns with A. H is different, because we chose, you know, reading over math, so that's completely different than what we had. Graduation rate is different, but I, and then the post-secondary completion is also different.
But I think right now they're going...
So are you capturing all five? I understood maybe that if it was already up there, we don't repeat it.
Yes, so that's a question, but only Charles and Paul can tell us if, what you, did you, what you meant by CCMR increase, is that the same as what Manny and Michael said for CCMR state accountability? Is it the same or something different?
I didn't look at it, and I don't know, me and Charles didn't look at it as a state accountability, we looked at individual increase. Obviously it's a state accountability, but also making sure our kids attain it, or not state achievement, but actually attend college or career that we're, we're working for the students, either a college career or military readiness.
Attend and complete.
Attend, not completing it, that's at least attending it, that we're, that we're, they're able to obviously exceed, but able to...
I think we're saying the same thi, I think we're saying the same thing, we're just, what Manny and I were saying by state measure accountability is to increase the measure, but to define it the way the state defines it, because it's a very, you know, that's, the, the measure is already documented by the state, so we don't have to recreate or reinvent the wheel, we know what it is. We're already held accountable for that, and what we wanna do is increase that. And maybe the way we put it isn't clear that we wanna increase it, but what we're trying to do is, is convey both, that we wanna increase it, and we wanna increase it according to the way that the state has defined what the measure is.
And that gives us, we're saying make it attainable, for students, make it attainable so they could be able to attend and accept it, not so much accountability as far as state, but just, it's, it's available for them.
So what I hear more is that you're leaning more towards the J piece of it, because the CCMR is, yes, you want them to go to college, career, military and get, receive everything that they need to be able to do that, but you want them to take the next step to actually enroll, actually get the certification actually, so I think they're leaning more towards the J, and I guess agree with CCMR that by meeting the measurement, that that means that they have the skills to then go to the next level. I think they're really focusing on the next, is that correct?
So what I'm hearing, just to make sure I'm capturing it right, we have what our first group said is the percent, like CCMR state accountability measure, just to make sure we're on the same page, means the percentage of our graduates who meet one of those checkmarks that says they're CCMR ready, right? That's what I hear you all saying. And then a second one, Paul, that I heard raised from you and Charles' conversation is, that's important, yes, we wanna make sure the students have that percentage checkmark, and there's this second piece that they actually go and do that. They go to the military, they go to the trade, they go to college, is that, and is that captured by J, the post-secondary completion element?
Yes.
Okay, so then in that instance, are, and this is really a question for Paul or Charles, are we good for removing this general CCMR increase at F and keeping CCMR accountability as in the first one, as well as J, post-secondary, what you do after?
Mm-hmm. I think so.
Okay, so you nod for both, great. And then second question that I heard raised is, what was your conversation around increase in third grade reading? Is that the same as third grade reading at meets as they had shared, or is that something different that you all had talked about?
I think it's the same at third grade star meets, and that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, okay, so I can consolidate, so we have three new ones. Increase third grade math, graduation rate, and then that post-secondary completion, what happens after us. The other two are represented already. Okay, any other questions here?
What's the difference between B and I?
Spot on, that's what I was gonna say. If, if we measure B, isn't G inherent to B?
Oh, the graduation rate?
Well, you said I, but...
Well, he moved it.
I've now moved it.
He moved it.
Trying to keep it, all right.
He's fast, fast.
Which, which two are you referring to? You're talking about CCMR accountability?
And graduation rate.
And graduation rate. So I don't know, that's a question. You know, are those two different? Same? Superintendent, feel free to chime in, you know this stuff deeply, so.
It's not our turn yet.
It's not our turn yet.
The only thing I was gonna... The only thing I was gonna... Gonna bring up is on H, for example. Although that, we want the same thing, I don't know if that's anything we have direct control over, of what they do after they graduate from our schools. So I would, I would be hesitant to put something where we just don't have that direct control or that direct relationship with that student after high school.
But what about G and B?
We'll come back to that.
My, G and B?
I need the question, the question on the table right now, and we'll come back to this point here momentarily. The question on the table is, is B, which says CCMR state accountability, is that duplicative of graduation rate, or are those two different measures?
I think they're two different things. I would, yeah, I would, I would stick with one or the other. Personally, I would wanna base it on, on the CCM, CCMR as opposed to the graduation rate. I think that's easier for us to, to track and to monitor and to support those students while they're...
So they are separate, I heard two different things. That answer the question about are they duplicative? Doc, do you wanna add something?
Yeah, just 'cause you graduate, what does that mean? That's a low bar. And the other one is much more descriptive about what did you actually earn? So, I mean, while they're different, maybe that comes later as you narrow the field. But also, back to Mr. Vasquez's question, how did PTEC come about? You know how PTEC come about? Because everybody kept telling me that in 2009, only 7% of Dallas ISD students had any kind of post-secondary credentials six years after high school. I didn't have that data, but they had that data. They were telling me how sorry we were, and that motivated us to come up with a solution. So even if you don't have it now, that may be a very powerful set of data that someone needs to collect for you, and someone, some people do that. So, you know, to me, it was shameful, but it turned into such a motivation that we changed the whole system because of it. And, by the way, that was one of our, at one point, it was one of our goals. So just because the data doesn't exist, at some point, you need to find out, can this data exist as they start going to the next step? When, when they tell you what they want, then you go figure out, can I get that data? And you bring it back to them and say, well, we tried, but we couldn't, we don't, we don't know how to measure this. But what you need to do now is just dream about what you want this district to be, and then they'll come back and let you know whether they can, they can quantify it or not.
Yep. And I wanna just make a couple of points on, on this, is like, number one, I see a board's often say like, oh, we, we don't have the data right now, to this point, like, it's the responsibility of the board to say, this is what winning looks like. It's the responsibility of administration to figure out how we measure it. Sometimes you gotta create something new, and that's gotta be okay, and sometimes it's right there for us. The second point to Superintendent Vasquez's piece around is what they do after us, do we actually control that? While that has been an argument, and I've seen boards fall on different sides of that, I've seen some boards say, absolutely, let's figure out how to track our kids and invest money in talking to them. That's, I've seen boards go different ways, but I will tell you, your legislature this year decided that that is your responsibility, and they're actually gonna require boards separately from this to monitor goals around that. So the state legislature in the state of Texas has said, that is definitely in bounds, and school districts should start thinking about that as you see fit. I'm not telling you to do it because of that, that will be this board's to discern, but the state has given a clear answer that actually that is what we expect of pre-K-12 districts to some extent.
Have they provided any funding for that?
Of course not.
Unfunded, maybe. Another one.
Actually, I'll take that back, I mean, there are, there are funding streams available for outcomes bonus funding, you can get up to $10,000 a kid who graduates and does these things and who goes, so there is funding for it, I'll take that back. There's not like we giving you in a lot and for, but there is definitely bonus funds, they triple PTEC funding, they've done a lot of these things around this, so there is money available should districts choose to pursue it.
And the reason why I mention that, because we have an, we have an early college, early high school. We know how many, how many, how many of our high school that go to early college, how many have an associate's degree?
Yeah.
We could, we know that.
Yeah.
But after that, we have no idea.
Right.
We're assuming all of them are gonna do it, not all of them do. So we're closing the gap there, I guess, we, we could, and we know how many get that, attain that associate's degree, but to get that college, we don't know, that's why I say we can close that gap.
Yeah. That, that will be, that is what we are here to do, is what does winning look like? And let's set what we want for our students, and then let's figure out the way to do it, as opposed to the other way around. All right, thank you for that. Next group, who's gonna go next?
I'll go next.
All right.
You sit back, I got this one. This might be some highlighting for you, because we have some of the same ones, but I wanna say it, just so you can consolidate.
And I might, you know what, I will do that, I will make a note that, say like, so there's two groups that said this one.
Increase third grade reading at meets or above.
Okay, so...
Increase third grade math at meets or above. This one is a little more narrow in scope. Increase eighth grade improvement on algebra.
Eighth grade algebra?
Correct.
Okay.
And then, to circle the wagons on the current conversation, increase the percentage of graduate CCMR ready, either college enrollment, certification or military service.
So this is, and you're referring to, like, actually, like, college enrollment, you're calling on specific elements, college enrollment, military enlistment, and what?
I would say military service, because there's different approaches to that. And then, any type of technical certification.
So IVC certification.
And so to kinda tie into some of that, because I, I mean, I hear good faith arguments on both sides, so I love this conversation. I don't know that we have the authority to collect some of that data. I think it could be voluntarily offered, but, for example, if I were to, we'll use the military piece, because that's, that's easiest right off the top of my head. Recruiters already collect the data. If they graduate basic training, recruiters get credit for that, right? Like it goes towards their recruiting numbers. That may be something that we could ask local recruiters to provide back to us, if they recruit out of our high schools, did they complete basic training? You know, how far are we gonna follow them past that, I think is a slippery slope. You know, if, if I did 12 semester hours of early college, but I don't complete in high school, and I wait until my mid-30s to go back and get an associate's or bachelor's degree, is that something we're gonna track here? I don't think it is. And so I think part of what we have to do when we talk the college enrollment, military service, technical certification, what we don't wanna do is go, well, they graduated, so they're not our problem anymore, good luck. Did we equip them? Did we resource them? Did we train them? Did we educate them? Did we empower them to go forth and prosper? What's the realistic amount of data that we can ask for back, and how do we measure that? Whether it's two years, 20 years, 40 years? My, my wife right now is a full-time college student for the first time in her life, her high school's not tracking that. If I go to college out of state, right, let's say I graduate from America's High School, but I go to the University of Nebraska, the University of Nebraska is under no obligation to send us any of that information back. So how do we, how do we do that? And I think our focus needs to be more on how do we educate, empower and equip those students after they graduate? You know, I think the difference when we were talking graduation rate versus, I think there was a discussion between B and G, right? There's gonna be that percentage of people that graduate that don't do anything, and I think that's the populace that, that the conversation was focused around. Some are gonna graduate and go to college, some are gonna graduate and go to, you know, directly into the workforce, doing auto body, whatever, right? Some are gonna go into the military, and then some are just gonna, let me go to Europe for a summer, and then we'll see what happens. There's nothing wrong with that. Like how do we, if we start putting those part of our goals, how do we measure that? And then what's our success rate? Like how do we define success with something that we haven't figured out how to measure yet? And I think that's my biggest concern there.
And what I'll say is, the how we'll measure it, that's not for this conversation. We gotta first, this board needs to get clear on what do we want? And then we'll explore, is it feasible to measure it or not, what adjustments do we need to make? So I'll try to steer us to like, first of all, let's define what we truly want, and then we'll get to the realistic, can we measure it, can we not measure it, et cetera? That's the next conversation.
And I think, just to play devil's advocate, but I took that SMART acronym, and I was applying that to the goals as we were going through, right? So I was making sure that as we went through the goals, does it meet those criteria?
Yeah, for sure. And I mean, all of that criteria, that's what's gonna come next, so we need a baseline, we need the timeframes, all of that. So if I, make sure I understood, you all said almost exactly, early literacy, third grade star meets or above. I heard third grade star math meets and above. And let me pause right there to Charles and Paul, you both mentioned increased third assessment in math. I heard you mention that that was basically star at meets rates and above. Was that accurate, or did you have a different measure in mind?
Star meets above.
Okay, so then it is the same, good. Then the new ones I heard was specifically eighth grade Algebra I and CCMR, but specifically college enrollment, military service, or certifications of some type. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
So those are the four? Or did you have a fifth one?
Nope.
Great.
We went, we went with four and focused on it.
I love it. Any questions for them?
Ben, C, middle school, Algebra I EOC is the same as I, because eighth graders take Algebra I, and so the Algebra I EOC is, we were referring to eighth grade when we said middle school.
Okay, so that group is combining theirs with yours.
And I think some of that amplifying information from us, or some of the stuff that Mr. Rodriguez had already talked about, you know, third grade's really setting the baseline.
Yep.
You know, I think there's this misnomer, I think the intent is good, I don't think that the statement is accurate, that prison beds are measured by third grade literacy rates. I mean, I understand where you're coming from, I don't think that's accurate, I don't think prisons actually count their grade literacy rates, can't prove it. But having that baseline at third grade?
Oh, I'm sorry, did you say prison?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, there's a, I don't, I don't wanna say old wives' tale, right, but there's like this story floating around, that prisons project how many beds they'll need in whatever year, based on third grade literacy rates of that class afterwards, right? I.e. third grade education, math and reading, directly correlate to productive members of society later on in life. So I think creating that baseline at third grade, I think is huge. You know, as we start looking from a STEM perspective, right, I think having that eighth grade Algebra piece is that launching pad into high school for early college, you know, or for, for anything else that we're, that we're offering, I think was that big piece that we had talked about. To include later on down the line, looking at potential CTE redesigns, right? Some of those programs that don't have quite enough enrollment that we're applying resources to? Do we shift those to budding programs, or do we create new programs based on what the economic environment has? Creating more opportunities for students to get plugged into CTE programs, that could get them into technical certifications, college enrollment, et cetera.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for them?
Did I? Okay, good. Just wanna make sure I didn't leave anything out.
All right, last but certainly not least... All right. Last, but certainly not least, what we got?
Sorry, they told me to speak into the mic. Um, we definitely have some similarities to everybody else. Um, our CCMR, we stated a four-year graduation rate at or above the region or the state, whichever is higher.
And when you say that four-year gra, that's, of our high schoolers, how many graduate in four years?
Yes.
Okay. Next?
And our second one was, uh, reading literacy, um, at third grade, again, at or above the, the region or the state, whichever is higher. And I learned a new word today, math slash numeracy.
Which word was new?
Eighth grade, but it's also for algebra I. Which is very similar to what you all have.
Is it the same, or is it different?
Uh, yeah, the same.
What about the third grade one? Same or different?
It's the same.
Okay, so we don't need it, because we already have it represented?
Correct. The only thing is, we were a little bit more specific, and actually, in comparison to region or state, meets and above.
Cool. So we will leave it since it is.
Yes.
Next?
Yes. Um, and the last, 295% attendance or involved, actively involved in an extracurricular activity, that's, that way we're showing that consistency or the connection to the school district. That way we don't lose them.
Okay.
And then the last one is, uh, one-year input is equal to one-year output, so pretty much that's very broad. But truly looking at our student groups, emerging bilingual, sped, eco-diz, um, and whatever student group is largest. I know at one point, Native American was a group we, we looked at. I don't know if it's still on the books as one of our largest, um, student groups. And truly the idea of growth measure, especially as we're going for 27, 28, where we're transitioning to that state growth measure, uh, that, that truly one-year input, every single child should have their, their growth measure and, and be able to attain.
Okay. Thank you. Questions?
I have one. Can you, like, elaborate more on that last one, one-year input, one-year output?
Mm-hmm.
I, so, I just.
Yes, whenever you're doing growth measures, um, truly, every single child, if it's norm referenced, every single child, when they take the beginning of your test, you pretty much know norm reference, what they should grow within a year, at the end of the year. And at the middle of the year, they take another growth measurement to see if they're, they're there or not, and what supports. And that way, it's, it's kind of cheating, because it is by grade level. Um, and that's where the state is headed towards, instead of just the one at the end for, for star, they're looking at a growth measurement piece of it. So, um, I don't know, it's very broad, but maybe if we do it into the student groups, we would be able to keep track of how to support, uh, those students that are possibly, or groups of students that are not measuring their one-year input, one-year output, which I like, because if I come in, um, in a deficit, and that amazing teacher helps me grow a year or more, wow, what is it that that teacher's doing to be able to, even though I might not still meet approaches, meet, I still might not meet the expectation, but I grew. So.
So if I'm in third grade, but my reading level is first grade, by the time I finish third grade, if I'm at second grade level, then that's one-year input, one-year output, so I progressed and I grew that year. I may not be at level yet, but at least I progressed as I should for one year to one year.
And I met my personal growth measurement, and applaud our teachers and our systems that we have. Because next year, it might be that I grow a year and a half more. So eventually, I'll be catching up to where I need to be.
Okay, makes sense. I think, um, third grade literacy L and A are, are the exact same thing. I believe that you all were just more specific with what your target was. So I think, and everybody feel free to disagree, but we were saying, what are we at right now? And let's grow on that. And what you all are saying is, if we're at 90, and the region and the state are at 94, then we don't just wanna go from 90 to 91 to 90, we wanna go from 90 to 94, because that's where the region and the state is. So y'all are being more specific on the target. Um, yeah, that's it. We, 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 I think we're just looking at growth, but not what the target was. So I believe it's the same thing. It just more specifically defines the target that we want to be at or exceed.
What I hear you saying is, you'll amend your third grade star meets to include the specificity around at or above region.
That's exactly what I said, sir.
Great. So then I will combine those two at the first, and add the at or above region. Any other questions for them, or suggested consolidations that may or may not be the same?
I just wanna, I guess maybe entertain even a discussion about D and M, um, whether there's any correlation there, or if there is an opportunity to consolidate them. I'm not sure whether, if anybody else has thoughts around that.
Yeah, we were just trying to give some specificity, that we know that if students are present, they will complete and they will continue to grow. And that's where we put the extracurricular. Uh, we know that maybe if they're not meeting a certain metric, but they're actively participating in something band, um, robotics, chess club, whatever it might be, they're still gonna be, they're gonna continue to come and, and do well, and, and complete. So that's what we were thinking. But, so consolidation is fine. We're just giving more specificity.
Let, let me ask this regarding attendance. Would that be considered a student outcome? Because, because sometimes it's not so much the students' involvement. Sometimes parents don't send them, or parents, it's more of a parental issue than a student issue. Could that be considered a student outcome?
It's a great question.
I think in, maybe the level, high school, is, I think it's more student can, can do?
I think it needs a little more research, because the way Manny presented it, it made total sense to me. You know, because, you know, if, if, if we have, like, I understand the, the, the two different approaches, um, absolutely. The 94% attendance rate, you know, you can do that a couple of ways. If you have 100 students, you know, you make sure that 94 of them are here every day, um, and don't pay attention to the six that are not, right? But at some point, I think the six that are absent, if it's the same six that are always absent, there could be external circumstances that require attention, you know, that just different social, emotional needs that we might be able to, um, you know, address. And, you know, by being able to provide that kind of support, um, we can, you know, help a student who not, who isn't only chronically absent, but probably because of that absent behind, and there's additional, you know, emotional and physical needs as well, that, that, that we would be able to, um, to help provide support in. That's why I like the chronic absenteeism approach, and I think the end result is the same.
I hear three different conversations happening here. The first is, are they the same, is what I heard. When I read these two, so there's one that is very explicitly focused on chronic absenteeism, 3, 6, 8% of our kids who are chronically absent. The other one is referring to the entire population of percentage of students who are involved in extracurricular. Is that accurate? In that aspect, I think to your question, Manny, it's an open question, but those sound very different to me.
Right. They, they sound different to me, too.
Okay. The second thing I heard is, is it a student outcome? And so, let's, let's dwell on that conversation for a moment. Do we think attendance or participation extracurricular, is it, is it something that students know and can do? Or is it something that adults have more say in? Whether parents and/or how we set up our structure or extracurricular activities?
But I think if you wanna extend it, you can also say, college or career, is it student? Was it the parents? Maybe they can't go to, go to college, they have to go work. So, I mean, it's, that's a broad subject. I think when they're in the elementary, and then it's gonna be evolving on the parents, obviously, for attendance. But when they get older, I think now, if they go to college, or they don't go to college, they get a trade, it could be based also on the parents, too, a factor.
I tend to think it's a student outcome, Ben, because it's something that the students know, right, that they should go to school, and it's something that they can do, which is show up. I think if they're not, a lot of the times, you know, and it's just reflecting, you know, if you're sick, you're sick. You're not gonna go to school, right? But if you're, if, if the student doesn't wanna go to school because they don't have uniforms, if the student doesn't wanna go to school because, um, because they're not proficient in reading, and so they're embarrassed, if, um, it's because the older brother and sister are home, because they're not going to school, so why should I have to go to school if they don't? You know, that kind of stuff. Um, I don't know, I think I just talked myself into a circle.
Well, I, I would say that it is, um, there is a correlation between attendance and student outcomes, because.
That, that's not the question. Not about cor, there's a lot of cor, excellent teachers, it's very strongly correlated with student outcomes. That doesn't mean having excellent teachers is a student outcome. So I wanna separate that conversation.
Okay.
Um, the question really is, and the, the way that I would recommend us thinking about this is, if on either one of these things, is there someone, not the student, who could make a different decision for the kid, and they, it changes? So for instance, in this case, is there a way that I, as an adult, could just choose to make sure that Maribel reads on level? Probably not. There's probably a whole lot of things that have to go on. Maribel still has to demonstrate she can read on level. That's what makes that a student outcome. Versus, could I, as an adult, a parent say, say, Maribel, no matter if you're sick or not, you're going to school? Is that, and if, if, if some adult can make a decision and change that number, even if they do or don't, it's an adult outcome versus a student outcome? That's how I would recommend thinking about that. And it doesn't mean it's not important. We will come right to these adult outcomes soon. So really, what we would be doing, if we say it's not really an adult outcome, or a student outcome, we're just gonna bump it down to the next conversation.
Well, and I think that's where I was gonna go to, Ben, where I, when I look at M, I think that's probably more student outcome, student input outcome driven, right? Like, the student has to put the effort to get the outcome. When I look at D, and, and I completely understand where you guys are coming from, um, and I was laughing with Jim earlier, education's not my forte, right? So I'm learning part of this. My initial thought goes to resourcing. And so if we look at chronic absenteeism, and this will get to that next part, um, what are we willing to resource to prevent chronic absenteeism? Is it individual vans? Is it, like, what, what are we willing to resource to help prevent that? Is it student outcome driven? I don't think so. Is it something we could talk about? Sure. Uh, but I think it's a different, a different line when it comes to student outcome-driven goals, D versus M in that capacity. So I, I would suggest not merging them. I think they need to be left separate.
Or I think what I'm hearing Ben say is, exclude them from this list, at least at this point, because they're not student outcomes. However, a portion of M, the extracurricular activity, is a student outcome. So if we were going to leave the extracurricular activity, or it would be appropriate to leave the extracurricular activity, because there's, you know, a, a broad spectrum of extracurricular activities, um, and many of them are, are, are student choices as to whether they participate or not.
Yeah. And I, again, I think the, it really depends on how this board engages around this. I think both of these could fall in student outcome or adult outcome, and it depends on two big factors. The first one, I think, I think everyone around this table would probably agree that kindergarten chronic absenteeism is not based on what the kindergartner knows and can do.
Right.
It's based on whether the parent will show up. So if you're looking at all chronic absenteeism, and just the percentage, which is an important thing, kindergarten chronic absenteeism is very meaningful, that would move it to the adult outcomes. And we still need to talk about how to resource it. It's one of our priorities, for sure. It's an important one. If you are narrowly focusing it on, well, you know what, I think high schoolers should know how to prioritize coming to school, and we wanna focus this on high school chronic absenteeism, because we do think that is what students know and can do. I could hear that argument for a student, now, because, but it's not, then where I would push the board is, the absenteeism is not the knowledge or skill that you're talking about. The knowledge or skill you're really talking about is, can a student understand why they come to school and prioritize? That's the skill you're actually talking about. So then how do we measure that? How do we start thinking about, how are our high schoolers able to actually say how, what they're doing connects to schools and therefore show up? It's not just about, are you here or not? It's not a checkbox there. So that, like, that's what I would really push the board on. I think the way you have these written, if you're asking my own coaching opinion, is that chronic absenteeism, super critical, probably an adult outcome, and we measure it as such, and it's still important, we still need to resource it. The attendance to extracurriculars, again, if it's elementary school, I could tell you, and I, we, we have it in Dallas, too, a principal can set up a system to have 100% of kids involved in clubs. Is that a student outcome? No, but it could be really meaningful. So, but if it's about students at the high school level or middle school level choosing something because they see value in it, well, now you're more on a student outcome. So I think there's two ways I can go about that.
You're not gonna have that many goals, you know, get said and done. So you're gonna have few. And if, the few goals that you do have, do you wanna measure quantity or quality? Just because a kid comes to school, doesn't mean he's learning. So you get him in school, well, if he doesn't come to school, you know he's not learning. But if just because he comes to school, is he learning? Or is she learning? So if you find measures that will help you measure quality, which can be done, then I think that is a lot more powerful, and your leverage gets bigger than just did they show up?
With that on the table, the question is, and again, both, like, what we do next will be equally, and we will talk about those, those will be just as important. We're gonna think about resourcing all of these. So it's not making a value judgment on these. Um, chronic absenteeism as an important point, as it's currently written, do we wanna make a strong argument to keep it as a student outcome, and why? Or do we wanna move it to the second part of the conversation as a critical element?
I think it's appropriate to move it as a second part of, of the conversation. Um, or.
Yeah, I think we can look at it as, I don't wanna call it a byproduct, per se, um, because it could be a motivator, right? If the only reason I show up to school is if I don't show up, I can't play in the football game tonight, then it's at least a motivator to get people there. And so I don't, except I don't wanna call it a byproduct. I just, I don't know if it fits in the outcome base, so I think moving it down, uh, I, I agree with Manny there.
Yeah, and, and I think it goes back to the point that Dr. Nojosa was making earlier about measuring quality. I think there is a tie between whether a student is participating in an extracurricular activity, and maybe that within itself could be defined as something qualitative, right? You know, they're enjoying their educational experience, and they choose to spend extra time, you know, with the school by being involved and whatnot. So this is, it's not the only way to measure quality. I think it's one of the ways to measure quality.
Great. Okay, we'll move chronic absenteeism down. We'll be right back to that conversation shortly. On the attendance involved with extracurricular activity, same question, board can argue either way. Do you feel like that needs to stay as a student outcome? Or do we wanna move it down to one of these other system outcomes that's important?
Yep, move it down.
Move it down, okay. All right. We will be right back to those. We'll put a pause in those. Thank you all for engaging there. The last question I have here, that I see two that seem very similar, is, I see a four-year graduation rate above or beyond the, like, above, at or above the region or state. Is that the same and just more specific as the graduation rate one? Can we combine those, or are those different?
When we say four-year graduation rate, uh, and maybe it's just, it's a one-off, plain devil's advocate, but there's folks that graduate in under four years. Where do they fit?
They usually fall under the four-year cohort. It's just, uh, the federal government counts four, five, and six-year graduation rates. Um, in my opinion, cohort is kind of in that four-year, meaning they started on time and ending on time. So that's why I just chose the four-year.
So it sounds like what is meant by this is that what this wouldn't count is fifth and sixth-year graduates, because somehow they got off track. It's great that they graduated, but that's not what we're prioritizing, getting kids completed on track.
And I think what I see is also for us to decide as a team, CCMR versus graduation rate, because I see C, CCMR in B, H, J, and K.
Cause I see C, CCMR in B, H, J and K, so I think we all agree on CCMR. It might be where we need just feedback on what the metric is and what we're measuring.
Yeah, I think you're right, I think graduation rate, I mean, it. If we're going to call a spade a spade, that's our job. Graduation rate, make sure the kids graduate to the best of our ability. How well they're prepared for what comes next, I think, is where we need to better define what our goals are.
Also very important.
So combine or leave separate? Separate?
Combine, B, H, J, K, CCMR is one and then graduation rate as a second one.
Okay, so.
Concur.
For the sake of this, we're leaving them all separate, three CCMR ones. And graduation rate as its own as a separate one. Okay, here's where we are, let me do some. Some movement here. I'll try to put these in. Just a second. All right. Here's what we have. We have a number here, we, I'll start, I tried to put them in roughly chronological order. So starting with the end, we have graduation rate as its own. And then we had four different specific measures of CCMR. So one way to look at it is what happens after they leave us? College or trade? Are they, how many kids are actually in college or trade? The next one was based on the state accountability system, what percentage of our graduates met the state accountability system? The next one was CCMR specifically these elements. How many of those kids enroll in college, military service, or have a certification of some sort? And the last one was specifically CCMR, but thinking about the four-year graduation rate at or above the region or state. So we have four different metrics on the table. In a second academic team, superintendent Vasquez, anyone on your team, we'll let you weigh in just kind of your thoughts about this momentarily, so the board can take it into account. But aside from those four, we also have eighth grade algebra one. Third grade math, star meets. Third grade literacy, star meets at or above the region or state. And then we have one specifically focused on special ed outcomes at star passing rates. And then more generalized student groups, but specifically looking at a year of growth. So those are the different buckets that we have to consider here that are all kind of different. In a moment, we're going to have, we're going to do an activity where we're going to actually start to put some weights to these. And you'll each get, we'll walk through that in a moment. Before we do, superintendent, I wanted to see if you and or your team wanted to give any insight based on your expertise on like, recommendations you might have on what would be more meaningful or how, what to consider that the board should think about.
One of the things I wanted to look at was the graduation rates specifically. I started talking like Michael yesterday. Graduation weight. So I, I look at, at the gradu, so I look at student outcomes as what you learn when you're sitting in a classroom. And when, from day one to day 180, what did they learn? What's the outcome? All the graduation rate is important, I don't know if I see that necessarily as a student outcome because it's not something that, it's not a knowledge and skill. It's not something that they learn sitting in the classroom. So I would make an argument that that's not a student outcome and maybe could be in the lower part of that list.
I will, and this is actually one that has an answer at the state level. It would be considered a student outcome and the reason being to graduate is it doesn't just happen because we choose that. Students must meet certain specific criteria, they must have passed courses and demonstrated that. And so those passing of courses that they earn is demonstrating the knowledge or the skills sufficient to graduate, which is why it's considered a student outcome. But I think the point you're making here is being so generalized, is it the most important one? I don't know, that's going to be for y'all to decide. And you also don't have to agree with me, you can say, we're going to still move it.
I mean, graduation rate's the minimum, right? Like, it's a minimum expectation we have and if the minimum wasn't good enough, we wouldn't call it the standard. But we're not picking our standards, we're picking our goals.
Right.
Right? And so I don't necessarily know putting in that framework, I don't think it fits.
I also think that if, if our goals are defined, you know, specifically and if, and if they're ambitious enough. They will ultimately lead to. Graduation rates regardless.
Right.
And so is.
But, and, and it's playing devil's advocate and maybe we're splitting hairs and I'm getting off track, but if we made a goal of a hundred percent graduation rate and threw everything else off. Are we going to be successful if everybody graduates, but they're not ready for the workforce, they're not ready for college, they're not ready for the military? Like, they graduated high school, they have a diploma, but they're not ready for anything.
See, and that's what I was trying to say earlier. Although maybe not as eloquently and certainly not as clear. If we look at the CCMR measures, all right, post-secondary completion, college or trade. If you don't graduate, you're not going to have a post-secondary completion or a trade. Cause that's typically a requirement, a GED or your high school diploma. The state measures same thing, college enrollment, military service, you know, all those are going to require some type of a high school level education completion. The same thing for the year, uh, four-year graduation rate. You know, whether it's in three years, four years, that goes back to the graduation rate. So for me, like, whether we choose all four, B through E, those CCMR ones. We choose any of those, graduation rate is inclusive. You can't measure those other ones unless the graduation rate or the graduation portion of that is already complete.
Yeah, and what I hear happening here is like, which ones of these are the, really the most important? What does winning look like? If some of these are more important because it assumes we'll graduate, or is graduation the one that's most important? Because that's the first one, like, if you can't do anything else without it. The, the frame that I would ask you all to engage, I think there's reasonable minds could argue on any side of this. The frame that I would ask you to think about this is, which of these goals is what winning looks like? When I go talk to people in the supermarket or I go to a community meeting, when we're sharing progress to the district. What's the one that's going to be most meaningful for our community that that's what winning looks like for kids? So, might be graduation rate, might be post-secondary enrollment, might be eighth grade algebra, might be some combination, that's what you all will get to think about. Um, all right, what we will do next, and then I'll see if there's any other questions. First of all, superintendent or team, do you have anything else that you would like to add?
I just want to see if anybody on the team had anything to share.
If you do, you need a mic.
We have some great wireless mics over, amazing.
Well, for, for us, I think when we're setting our goals, not that they need to align with your goals. We are looking at our third grade because it's one of the, you know, we're competitive and it's one of the few areas that we are below the region in meets. And so it's something that we are focusing on. And then also algebra one, we're, we have ninety percent plus approaches. But our meets is closer to about fifty-four. So that is another concern for me because I feel like it should be much higher. So those are things as a academics, in, in academics that we're looking at. As being, um, things that we're focusing on for this next year. Um, graduation rate, I, I think of the charter schools that we compete with all the time and one of their selling points is. A hundred percent of our kids graduate and our college and career readiness. Of course, you know, we know that they're kicking them out of snapshot, however, um, they sell it and the community likes it. So that is something as you're talking that I probably wouldn't have been on board, like, it wouldn't have been a major one for me, but now it is.
Which one is that?
I keep hearing the commercial, the graduation rate, because that's what charter schools are advertising, that is their highlight. And that's who we know we're competing with in our area right now. Um, so for me, those are the most important, the only thing about CCMR is it's always a lag year. And so, um, things that we put in place, we, we, we're gonna, our, next year we'll be looking at data from this year, from last year. So we're always a year behind in that, so it's a little bit harder for us. But of course, um, I know just on what we've done, that the CCMR is already going to go up for next year, we're going to look better next year. And so, um, I guess that's my perspective, my two cents.
Perfect, so what I hear, I want to make a couple of notes, what I heard in this is like, the ones that top of mind for you are third grade reading, eighth grade algebra, and now graduation rate.
And now graduation rate, after I heard you discuss it.
Great. Two things I do want to address in this, number one is, I heard at the beginning that like, you know, the board's going to have goals, administration's going to have goals. I want to be clear, what the board sets will be the district's goals, like, those are the district's goals all the way through. It doesn't mean administration isn't going to have other goals on other things that are important. But those will become the whole up and down the organization, the priorities. The second thing is CCMR, it is interesting, it is lagged year. So when you get your info this year in late 2025, your CCMR data that'll be on that report will not be your class of 2025 that just graduated, it'll be class of 2024. That's how the state does its accountability. That is not the requirement that you set your goal around that. You could set your goal around our current year best estimates of CCMR for the current class. It might not be perfect, there might be some adjustments, you'd have to be okay with that. But the districts can certainly calculate what our current estimates are. You might set that and just know that it's going to be a little bit off from what it comes. So those are definitely options there.
Yeah, and I think for letter D, that's what I was, I was looking at, is we know who's enrolled, we know how much scholarship money that they have coming to them. We know who's enlisted, we know who has AutoCAD certs, like, we know that before they graduate. And we could probably even project over the next six months, these people will complete whatever process to get there. And so I think for D, that was my, and I, I did not articulate that properly, so my apologies. That was my intent with D when we were talking about it was, with the current class, what are we projecting based on what we know right now?
Just for my clarity, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I want, I want to add two very important points, because I love this dialogue. This is amazing. But this is a long game. Every year you're going to get lagged data. If you do, if you put the right things in place for the long game, doesn't matter who you're competing against, you're going to get, you're going to be doing the right stuff. And if you're playing the long game, there are so many districts that leave so much money on the table on outcomes-based funding. You're struggling right now about how you're going to pay your insurance bills. There's money at the end of the pot, if you do this right, and just like you considering the teacher. I was talking to your staff today, this money stays in Austin. The teacher incentive allotment stays in Austin, outcomes-based funding stays in Austin. You know, this, if this tax you're considering, if they, if they don't give you the money, if your taxpayers don't support it, that money's going to stay in Austin. So why not be smart and calculated and do the right thing for the right reasons and you'll get rewarded for it? So don't, don't have, that's what the purpose of goals are, is not to look right here, to look down here. Because even when he gets done, you're going to see, this is what we expect, that this is where our current performance is, this is where we want to be, and how do we get there? And, and it's not a one-year trek, it's a multi-year trek. So just keep that in mind as you're, as you're picking what's important to you and your community.
Ben, and I'm not sure if you outlined this in the beginning and maybe I just missed it, but as we're setting these goals, what is the timeline? Like, what's, for how long?
That's a great question. What we recommend and what Lowstar Governance recommends is you should set them for five years to give you some runway. Because to put systems in place that truly help you achieve challenging goals, if you're going to start to exceed the state in reading, you need runway to start doing this work and build it up. That doesn't mean you're locked in for five years. What also is recommended, and I think, um, next month we'll be talking about board operating procedures, et cetera. Is what's going to be a recommendation is we build in a process by which we review these. You're going to be monitoring progress, but what I often see happen is that boards say, well, every fourth year before we start to expire, we do this process again and we see, do we need to make updates or changes? Or if we achieve one of our goals, we immediately go into a conversation around, should we keep that goal, should we change the goal, et cetera? So you'll be able to build those cadences in, but it, it's our recommendation that it's five years and both from a general standpoint, but also functionally, you are required by House Bill Three in 2019 to set goals around third grade reading, third grade math and CCMR. All of your stuff pretty much qualifies in there. Um, those are required to be five-year goals, so why not do the same thing and just set the five-year goals and then set a cadence to which.
Can I just have a, a question just for clarity? For the CCMR outcome bonus, is that lagging or is that in real time?
Uh, it is slightly lag, the funding gets released lagging. For those of you who don't know, this is essentially, if you know the CCMR accountability, there's like thirteen different boxes that if a student meets any of them, they get counted, college and career ready. The CCMR outcomes bonus funding that Doc is referring to is, it's a narrower version. So basically for all of your graduates who meet TSI, ACT or SAT, they got to be at the college level of one of those. And either enroll in college or get a certification. So it kind of goes along with the, what you have here around item B and around item D, except it'd be like, not just if you enroll in college, but did you get ready for college by the TSI and enroll? For each of those students, the district will receive between three and ten thousand dollars as a bonus for each of those students that meet that threshold. And so our state generally gets about fifteen percent of the total that's out there, but there's probably about a billion dollars left on the table annually. So that would be an amendment to say like, well, we want to keep one of these, but add the TSI component and look at it that way, you could choose to do that. That's what that's referring to. The money is lagged, so you would, this year you'll receive money for class of 2024, but it comes on an annual basis. So you can measure it, you can measure the current class, you just know that money won't hit until a year.
And, and the reason that I was asking is that might help us land for B, C, D and E because those metrics are already set. And it actually helps us financially, so without, um, putting it as a goal, because this is what students could do. Students could actually bring us some money if we have good systems, so that, that might help us narrow B, C, D and E if we put CCMR outcomes bonus. And we could identify one of those metrics to truly, or all, to, to focus on.
So what I'm hearing as a proposal is that students that are TSI, SAT or ACT plus. College enrolled or IBC certificate.
That's what Paul was mentioning and, and so was Mr. Smith.
And so what that would do is that particular line item would come with additional funding, although I would posit. That it's actually not about the money, that's a bonus, that's why it's called a bonus, it's actually about getting kids ready for college and then into a trade or a career. So it's an option, is that what I hear, considering, put it on the list for now and then we can talk about it?
Paul, does that help you close the gap from what you were talking about previously with that conversation where?
Well, I want to backtrack, and you mentioned these are to be the board's goals.
Mm-hmm. They will be the district's goals.
The district's goals. They're the experts, cabinetists. So can we work together with the goals with them? Because they know more about this than we do, we're not the experts here, that's one thing. And when I'm talking about, when you mentioned about the TSI and SAT, years ago in our district, we, and we gave our eighth graders the TSI testing, but we never followed up with them. And now we changed that, but we're going back and we're helping them with the TSI. The other districts were doing that, so I don't know what we're doing now as far as TSI and SAT, but are we, are we changing that now? And I guess yes, that will be closing the gap, but are we helping our students now with the TSI? We, we just gave them the test and we never told the students, this is how well you did. We gave them tests and that was it. Whether they failed or passed, we had no idea, the student had no idea. Now we need to make sure, how can we help them with the TSI and the SAT to get that score and so they could advance? And that would obviously yes, close that gap there.
Administration, do you have any thoughts or considerations?
Good afternoon, uh, sorry I'm a little late, we, we had our principals today, but I, um. Carlos Guerra on this as the superintendent overseas secondary. Um, definitely, um, obviously CCMR is one of the things that is not only by state mandated, but we, especially at the high school level, as they're getting ready for their post-secondary goals. It's, it's an item that we continuously working to improve. Uh, to answer a little bit of, of your question, Mr. Guerra, it's, it's something we continuously are working on, on not only how, on the number of kids we're testing, but how we're testing them, how we're preparing them. Uh, we continue to prepare them all the way from the beginning of eighth grade through our entrepreneurship class. We only test them at the eighth grade for the English, uh, TSI. In, in regards to, um, the beginning of the freshman year, for all students, uh, we, we get one opportunity to test for the English, but we also work through the algebra two. Given the fact that most of our students have taken algebra one now at the eighth grade level. And we do prepare them, uh, throughout the class to make sure they have, they're provided for their first time taking the TSI test for, uh, in the math, uh, at the freshman level. That is, that, and I, what I'm speaking of is a comprehensive students, of course, students who participate on PTEC. Of course, students who participate on PTEC or early college are, are testing throughout, uh, because that is part of the requirements of, of them being part of those programs. Uh, in addition to that, um, we have moved beyond just offering TSI on Saturdays only. We are being a little more systematic. That means that we are providing opportunities throughout the year. We're looking at specific kids, not only kids who have not tested, but kids who have tested that maybe are two, three points away. And, and providing those interventions to make sure that the students are not only able to provide an opportunity to test again, but also that we're able to get them ready to make sure they're successful. The reality is that the TSI exam, especially on the math side, but I'll go back to it on both ends, it's not an easy exam for students when they're 14, 15 years old. The passing rate every time they test is about 13, 14%. Uh, we keep biting at that elephant a little bit at a time. Uh, the idea is that by the time they graduate high school, and to be honest with you, by the time they are getting to that junior level, they're able to get a lot of kids to qualify for, for college classes, especially those kids who are not part of early colleges. We do have some systems that we've been working closely with EPCC. We have large numbers in, in, in a lot of our high schools. Uh, this year we implemented what we call College Connect classes. Uh, those classes are on, in speech, uh, in math, 13, uh, 14, 21. Uh, and we also have Mindy Education 1300, which is kind of the introductory class on, on, at the university level uh, for students who have not successfully passed a TSI exam. That means that we enrolled these kids with a waiver of through EPCC and a lot of these kids are able to pass that Education 1300 and the speech, and automatically qualify some for the English 1301, 1302. That will give the kids the nine hours of college credit that will make some CCMR ready.
Yeah, I think the, I think the question, rather than diving into what we're doing about it, I think there, the question is, we're trying to ascertain is the importance of TSI. Um, and so in, one, let me just take a step back and then I'll go back to you and make sure, Paul, that your question gets answered, is TSI is required for students to enroll in college without remediation. That is TSI, ACT, or SAT. Um, there are other ways to get, and I think what you're referring to about this nine hours, that's about the accountability. So they don't have to pass TSI to get the accountability. You can find other ways, they can do college prep and get the accountability that way. But the TSI metric that is related to the outcomes funding does require that a student hits a passing rate. I think the real question here that this board is gonna have to grapple with, and we don't have to talk about it yet, we're gonna put some numbers to it and then have a discussion, is, is that meaningful and is that something we want to say for our system? That really the question. So first of all, to get a, did that answer your question or do you have a more specific question about TSI?
Yes.
Okay. President Nahara.
You said exactly what I wanted to say, so yeah, I understand all of that, but is it a meaningful outcome? That's what I was looking for. I understand the graduation rate and Ms. Parham, I, I hear you all the time. Or I hear you that they say it all the time and I agree with you. But every single one of us in here knows that they're lying. And if we sit here and say, we're, number one, we're never gonna be able to say that we have 100% graduation rate. It's just not possible, right, for, for, for one reason or another. And if we say that, and, and why are we never gonna be at 100%? Because life is not predictable. So even where, you know, just the sad truth is maybe we're gonna be 0.01% short of 100%. And so we're never gonna be able to compete at that. We're never gonna be able to truthfully say that we are at 100%. So like I would not want that to be one of our goals because there's better things that we can compete against. I heard most recently Mr. Vasquez say, um, that the opportunities that our kids have here with CTE, UIL activities, other extracurricular activities, sports, the flag football, everything, you know, the broad spectrum of things, the fine arts are things that students would, you know, some would never get, no matter what charter or private school they attend in the city. And to me, that is a more meaningful message than trying to compete at the 100% graduation. The 100% graduation rate, I always attack it by saying, well, yeah, it's easy to achieve 100%. You just kick everybody out who's not graduating. It's exactly what they do, so, you know, end of that conversation and just, you know, we know they're lying. At some point, if we turn around and try and say 100 gradu- percent graduation rate, yeah, then we would be too, because someone's gonna come across someone who didn't graduate and they're gonna say, okay, well, who's lying? And the first thing that they're gonna fall is, it's the public schools.
I think the, the, the data that I would like to see is how many of your freshmen that begin with you graduate? That would be a measure of, of success. Because I know that for us that would be in the high 90s, but it wouldn't be the same for them because they, it's.
I think it goes to that cohort that Ms. Macias was talking about as well.
Well, I think, I, I think it has to be a district goal because we're not gonna graduate 100%. Our goal is when the kids enter kindergarten, just to 12, 12th grade, their goal is to graduate. That's our goal for them to graduate. And from there, they want to go to post-secondary, it's up to them. I think that's gonna be one of our goals, we're never gonna do 100%, of course not. Let them see that. But I think our goal still is to see the graduation rate, maintain it or increase it by, and by the state level.
Okay. Sounds like we are advocating for one way or the other, that's great. That's what we're gonna do here in a moment. Any last very specific questions that anybody has before we move into the next segment? All right, what you're gonna do is, uh, trustees and superintendent are gonna work individually, take, find a piece of paper, rip off like a corner of it, and you are going to write five numbers, you're gonna write 15, 12, 8, 5, and 3. I don't need your name on it, but 15, 12, 8, 5, and 3. You are gonna attribute points to whichever of these measures are most meaningful to you based on this conversation that we had. So the most important one, whatever of these metrics you think are the most important one, you're gonna put that letter next to 15. So if I think third grade reading is the most important, I'm gonna put I, which is my third grade reading one, next to 15 and so on down. You can use all five, or you could just use three of them if you wanted to, it's up to you.
Can you repeat the numbers or?
15.
Uh-huh.
12. 10.
You said.
Eight, no, sorry, yeah.
15, 12.
15, 12, 8, 5, 3, my bad, it's right here. 15, 12, 8, 5, 3.
8, 6, 7, 5.
309.
I'll give you all a few qu, few moments here. Go ahead and write the letters next to each of them. When you finish your five, send them down to Doc, he'll grab them from you. Doing a great job, Doc.
Mr. Nahara, one personal privilege, is there an opportunity to take a five-minute recess before we move on to the next section after this one? If not, I'll do it on my own, I decided I'd ask.
First one? Yep.
I 12.
Yep.
G H. J 5. K 3.
Next.
I 15. H 12. G H. E 5. B 3.
I think I did mine wrong.
K 15. A 12. I 8. G 5. B 3. I 15. G 12. B 8. J 5.
B 8.
B is a 4, 8.
Yep.
J 5. K 3. B 15. I 12. J 8. A 5. G 3.
Sorry, J 8.
J 8.
A 5.
J 5. G 3.
Hit.
H 15. I 12. A 8. C 5. D is a dog, 3.
Okay.
I 15. H 12. D is a dog, 8. G 5. A 3.
D 8, what was the 5?
D 8. G 5. A 3. And the last one?
He's wrong.
G 5, A 3.
Mine's wrong.
Can't change it now.
Can you move it, oh, sorry.
Look up.
She's not cheating. No, no, I'm not cheating, I promise you I'm not cheating. No, I don't call it.
What was the last, is he the last one?
Sorry, I didn't follow directions very well.
Need to go look, need to see the alphas.
I need, yeah.
A little bit smaller here.
Sorry, sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
B 15. B 15.
G 12. A 8. I 5. A 3.
All right, team. All right. Looks like we have some, um, some pretty good consensus here. So first of all, we had every trustee said literacy is one of the top five. So it feels like that's a pretty straightforward one around third grade reading. Um, we also, that's by far 94, and that kind of aligns with what your community said, academics first with a specific focus on literacy, so that aligns there. Then we have two in the 50s. CCMR looking at the outcomes bonus metrics of are you TSI, ACT, SAT ready? Plus, do you actually enroll in college or have a certificate? Algebra I. And then it looks like we've got another one that's pretty close there, which is a third grade math meets. So it looks like we have four that are above the 40 threshold and pretty strongly there. So those seem like four that this board far and away prioritizes. Yep.
That was powerful to watch, but check what you've done as a team. You've done, you got one at the end of the line, one in the middle, and one at the beginning. Uh, and even like your third grade reading, a lot of problems, a lot of times that we've discovered that a kid can't do math is they can't read the problem. And so I think that if you take care of the literacy, it'll help take care of the math problem. And remember, you don't want too many goals. But if you just take the top three that you can't, and you're in violent agreement of the team of eight, all eight said number one. Six of the eight said number, said the second, and seven of the eight said the number three. See, so you're in violent agreement, those are the top three. And, and so now, you, this is back when we started working on all this, you determined the what. You got a great team. They'll figure out the how. But this is what you want, what the board's job is. And, and I want to reiterate, and I have to correct people all the time, all over the country, you don't have board goals and you don't have staff goals, you have district goals. Uh, and they're gonna do all this other stuff. If they were smart, they better not ignore graduation rate. If they're smart, they better not ignore special ed, because it all leads to the other stuff. You see what you just did? It was powerful.
So it looks like we have four of these, um, that we'll definitely include. While Doc drew the line there at the three that had at least six out of eight, you are required by law to have a third grade math goal, so since that was your number four, it should be included anyways. I will then open it up to this board. You could have four goals, you can probably assume that about 25% of your focus is gonna be on each of these. If you want to add a fifth, the board may choose to do so, but recognize, back to our prioritization, that by adding a fifth, you will decrease focus on early literacy, early math, eighth grade algebra, and CCMR. If you are okay with that, you may entertain the conversation about, do we have another one of these that we would like to definitely include? Or are we okay focusing on those four as priorities? So with that, I'll open it up to the floor if anyone would like to make an argument either to keep it at those four or to add a fifth and decrease some focus.
Just have it adding the fifth. Um, and just going by the numbers, uh, in the right column for the total, if, the first one we're gonna talk about is graduation rate, I think you can make a case for that. If for nothing else, a tracking mess, a tracking mechanism, um, that, that is kind of the, the byproduct of everything else we've put into. But if we do those top four well, then the fifth one should be probably extremely high. Um, you know, do we, what was our graduate, graduation rate last year, like 94, 95%?
Microphone.
Oh, yeah, mic. Sorry, Mr. Gary, that's my fault.
So yes, we, we were about 94%. Uh, once you look at the accountability, it, it does bring it down to about 90, 90, 93%. Uh, just because the cohort is, um, you know, not completely aligned, so that's, that's for the fourth year. So we're at 92.7 to be exact.
Okay, and so like if I, if we're looking at third and eighth grade, if we were to add graduation rate as a goal, we may not see the direct byproduct of the graduation rate increase for five years? Tops? Um, but I think it's a good tracking mechanism, right? So I, I would personally make the case in, in this particular one for graduation rate that maybe it's not a goal, but it's definitely something is a tracking mechanism to see down the line if our top four goals are actually worth their weight, if that makes sense.
So am I hearing you correctly that says, we don't want to necess, you're not necessarily advocating to make graduation rate one of the five priorities? What you are advocating, it sounds like for, is that we believe that these four things should result in a higher graduation rate. And we should look at the mirror down the line and see if these things are actually resulting in a higher graduation. Am I hearing you accurately?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So not an advocacy for it being an additional focus area specifically, but we look at it as part of this bigger picture.
Yeah, I think it's something that we definitely track, right?
Your district's gonna track a whole lot. You don't have science on here, your district's gonna be tracking and reporting on science, it's gonna be, happen, so.
Yeah, to make it, to make it an objective goal, I, I don't think so, right? But I definitely think that that number in theory is going to increase when the other four increase as well.
Right.
And just for a clarifying question, for HB3, do I and H automatically fall into HB3?
Yes, they would count for your HB3 goals.
So, team, those are already. So, team, those are already part of the goals that we have to approve as a board for House Bill three. So technically for administration, we have goals B, G, and possibly A, meaning that we would have three goals. The other ones are already included in what they track.
I would, well, I would hesitate. You probably have adopted HB three goals. Most districts adopt it based on whatever meets rate is and CCMR accountability. There is no requirement that your HB three goals be the basic of accountability requirements. In this instance, your CCMR goal is actually more rigorous and more specific than what most districts adopt for HB three. It would still count. You wouldn't have to do another one. But what I'm saying here is like you have, you've, based on this, have made an intentional choice to focus on a more challenging, more rigorous definition of CCMR.
I was just bringing back the graduation rate piece. Five, five of eight of us voted in some way for the graduation rate, just as it came out. So I was advocating in kind of the same way that it be added in some, some way. And I was just trying to justify the fact that the others might already be within our goal, so it's not an additional lift for administration.
So Ben, so, so what I did, maybe I went about it the wrong way. When I rate, when I ranked them, I ranked them by chronological, chronological order, starting with, with third grade assessment. And then moving up.
The directions, and maybe this might change things, but in which case you can advocate for it now. The fifteen points, in theory, would be allocated to whichever of these you thought was most important, if you can only measure one. So if you felt that graduation rate should have been your most important one, you would advocate that that, I maybe should have put fifteen points there, not necessarily chronological order. But given that we have this now, it sounds like though, are you saying that, do these four that we have highlighted green, do they definitely sound to you like they make the most sense for?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
So then I think that the only question on the table that I'm, I'm hearing, I've heard an advocacy for graduation rate, we should look at it, but it shouldn't necessarily be its own priority. We're believing that these things will lead to that. What I'm hearing from you, Trustee Macias, is actually, you know what, graduation should be its own priority. And I guess that's the question for the board to determine is, do we want to add this fifth priority specifically on graduation rate? And in that, be okay with whatever our targets would have been on these four, we gotta be okay with setting them a little bit lower if we're gonna add another one. You gotta be okay with that. Or we focus on these four a little bit more because we can have more attention. So that's, it's an open question.
I think that we need to add the graduation rate as a fifth one.
I, I disagree. I think, um, going back to what you said earlier, um, focusing on those four will lead to increased graduation rates. And as is, I mean, that seems just broad, and it goes back to the comment that I, I think Dr. Nahos said earlier. That's a low bar. And I think if we are going to add it, I would feel more comfortable with being a little bit more specific as opposed to just something like that.
Okay.
And I agree with, I'm sorry, and I agree with, with, uh, Mr. Rodriguez saying, but not everybody's gonna be college and career readiness. Or not everybody's gonna have, some, some people can have a trade and not go to, go to, go to college. So we're, we're gonna, we're gonna miss those students.
It looks like you have them in B. It talks about a certificate.
Which one?
Sir, uh, B, CCMR. It's, it includes college enrollment or an industry-based certificate for career.
Correct. But those, what I'm saying is that those students that don't, don't do neither, that are just gonna, just finish, not finish grad, not, not finish high school, and not even attend college or, uh, or a certificate. So those are the kids that we're, we're gonna miss. So that's what I'm saying, graduation rate, that might be a factor with those students.
Let me ask you one more question. Are you okay with missing those students? Or do you want them to earn a certificate or go to college?
Oh, I would like them, yeah, absolutely.
But I think...
But that doesn't mean that they're going.
I think that by adding graduation rate as a goal, then we take away the time and dedication needed for, for our employees, our counselors, our teachers, our administrators, to focus their attention and energies on B. And the more we focus on B, the CCMR, the more likely we are, because when they work with kids, when, when I was a high school counselor, when we're working on their CCMR, that's where we catch the kids that are, are maybe not gonna graduate, because we work with them so diligently on completing their, their core sequence. That's when you catch them. So we need to let them focus and spend that twenty-five percent of their time on B. Because if we do, graduation's gonna come naturally.
Yes, again, I wanna make, I'm, I wanna acknowledge your concern and your point. But I didn't have this epiphany until after I retired. And I wrote it in my book, and I put it in every one of my speeches. The epiphany that I had in Dallas, and by the way, Dallas has fifty-five percent English learners. That, that's seventy-one thousand students. Dallas has more English learners than El Paso ISD has students. Than Frisco has students, and San Francisco has students. So, but this is what we, the epiphany that I had when I wrote my book, and I haven't even told Mr. Mackey. The top quarter, they're gonna be good in spite of us, because they're in an international baccalaureate, advanced placement, or magnet schools. So those kids, those are my kids. They're gonna go to college in spite of us. That's the top quarter. With Dallas College, we create, and you've got a version of it, with P-Tech, we created a second quarter, where twelve percent of our kids graduated with an associate's degree for free. Now you've created a second quarter. The only complaint we got about this and this is the other fifty percent. They said, what about us? We didn't get in magnet schools, and we didn't get in P-Tech. That's what forced our CTE program to be completely re-engineered. And those industry-based certificates, cybersecurity, Megatronics, dual-language HVAC. And I got killed everywhere I was because I did away with cosmetology. Why did I do away with cosmetology? Two of my brothers are barbers. But they run the place. They're entrepreneurs. When I looked at the data, every girl that was in cosmetology was black or brown. There were no white girls in cosmetology. And they took five classes in high school in cosmetology, and guess what happened? Only twenty percent went to the state to tech, test. Only twenty percent of those passed. Then they had to wash hair before some beautician died so they could take over. What you do away with is low-end CTE programs, and you create great CTE programs. And you have a lot of them already. So you don't, you don't leave out any kid. But now that high school graduation means something. Because you, 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 you can go somewhere and get, and get a, a meaningful job. And, and you can go to the military. You see, so it's just a different way of thinking it. You get rid of the pobrecito syndrome, the soft bigotry of low expectations. By setting up a system like this, this is what we did in Dallas. And they're still, they still got it going. So, and, and I didn't even realize this until I went back and reflected on. And, and we started career institutes because the kids said, man, Doc, we didn't get in those programs. And it was the board member's idea. It wasn't my idea to start those career institutes. And you have a version of that with your CTE. Your CTE is good. It can be great if you got it lined up to make sure, and by the way, Microsoft Suite doesn't count. And neither does Google Suite. Because anybody can do that one. But it's gotta be rigorous and measurable, and you get CCMR points for it if it's the right kinds of job. And these kids, they have, may, may need six college hours or none. But once you get that welding certificate, you got it for life. And what we figured out in Dallas, figured out how to put it on your cellphone with the, with the blockchain technology called Greenlight. So now you've, you got it forever, and you won't lose a job because you can't find your certificate. It's right here. So anyways, I, thanks for letting me, because you're saying the right stuff. But it is possible, if it's rigorous enough, to get the right stuff for all of your kids.
Matt, did you have something you were gonna add? Okay. Here's what I hear, and then you all tell me if you want to do anything different. I hear four, we are in violent unanimous agreement that those are four meaningful ones. I hear one that was split, and so what I would recommend we do is we move forward with the four, and then the next time the board sees them, once you actually see them with more specificity and what the progress measures would be, you can then open the conversation again. Do we want to add the graduation rate? Or do we think this covers it? So it gives you some time to mull on this and think about it.
And, and I just want to say, I agree with what, um, Trustee Guardia said earlier. When efforts are, are invested in the four I, B, G, and H, it naturally, I think, contributes to K, uh, to A. If it doesn't, then there's something wrong. But that, you know, just to kind of reemphasize what you mentioned earlier.
All right. So what will come next, um, is unless the board wants to spend more time being even more specific, what I would recommend is we say, these are the four good ones that we are definitely agreeing on. We're gonna punt it to Superintendent and their team to actually put some numbers to these. Tell us where we're at, tell us what we should be at, tell us what growth should look like every year, and come back to us what you're gonna measure. If you say third grade reading is what we're gonna aim for, tell us what we're gonna be looking at in December to tell us if we're on track or not in all of these. They will bring those back to you, and that would be the second conversation. Do we need to make any adjustments, or is this the direction we want to go? That will come next. Any questions on this? We have made it through half of this. The second half usually goes a little bit quicker because we now know the process. But with that, I think we're gonna take a five-minute recess that I hear, and then we'll come back, or? Ten? Ten. I'll be here when y'all are ready. Sounds good. Raise your hand if you need any more time. Feel free to take some more time to finish up. You don't have to rush immediately to your groups, but I will give the groups so that you know you can start working when you are ready. We're going to switch it up this time. We will have Manny and Alice. We'll have Jimmy and Charles. We'll have Paul and Maribel. And we'll have Michael and Ryan. So whenever you're ready, you're going to take your one to five and come up with one list of one to five that you both agree on. But feel free, if you're still working, take your time and then get with your partner. Thank you for engaging in that. Raise your hand if you need more time. Is that a, raise your hand, is that more time? You're good. Two more still working, a few more minutes. Alright, well, we'll bring it back together and see where we're at. Let's, you know, let's start on this side. We have these two, so if you have these two, feel free to just say that they're already up there. And then share with me what other ones came up in your conversation.
We had addressing the fund balance.
Fund balance, okay.
Healthcare.
Healthcare, okay.
And stakeholder satisfaction.
Stakeholder satisfaction, okay. Questions from the rest of the group about what these mean, any specifics about them, et cetera. What do you mean by stakeholder satisfaction?
It's through climate surveys, you know, surveying teachers, surveying parents, students, and to see where we're at. How good a job are we doing? And trying to achieve a certain, a certain level of satisfaction for stakeholders.
Other thoughts, questions?
Would you say, you said parents, students, personnel, would you also include community? Just folks who may not have kids in the district, but you know, are residents?
It's something we consider. We typically haven't, we used to do climate surveys pretty frequently in the past. It's been several years since we've done it, but we would just typically do parents, teachers, and students, but something we can consider.
Other questions? Paula looks like a questioning face. I don't know. So one thing to consider, in your conversation about stakeholders, so what I heard is, stakeholders is a general term, but maybe not community, but maybe we could talk about it. What, just like saying, you know, we want all students to be great on all subjects is broad. Stakeholders is broad. So if a board chooses a goal about, or a value about all stakeholders, you can get some information, but don't expect to get details about how the students feel and how the parents feel. Expect one big number about how everybody feels altogether. Or was there any conversation about particular areas of stakeholders that might be more of a priority currently because of whatever reasons versus other ones? Or was it intentional to keep it more broad?
We had student experience and staff experience and satisfaction.
Okay, so you actually, actually broke it out into two. So stakeholders around staff satisfaction, and one around...
Staff experience and student experience.
Okay, so are you okay if we then split these out into staff experience and student experience as two different ones?
Yes.
Okay. That's a lot more, see, and what I hope you see is like, that is a very different conversation than general stakeholders. Thank you. Any other questions for them? Next up.
Solvency, balanced budget.
Are those separate or together?
Together.
Together, okay. Financial solvency, specifically a balanced budget, right?
Second one, it's basically up to two, this one is building fund balance.
Fund balance, is that the same as what they said is fund balance? Are we good with that? Okay.
Mitigate decline enrollment.
Enrollment, okay.
And the fourth one here, we said customer service almost ties, I guess, to staff experience, I would say. Customer service overall, customer service meaning faculty, community, stakeholders.
Okay.
And the last one, thinking out of the box, bold action TL.
Bold action TL?
TIA, teacher incentive allotment?
Oh, teacher incentive allotment, okay. Alright. Questions?
Of course not, because those are great answers.
So what's the difference or the similarities between C and G?
C is fund balance, G is balanced budget.
So fund balance is, our fund balance right now is, was it $15 million?
Our fund balance?
Same as account. That's totally different than average.
About 17 days of fund balance, so.
Yeah, because, yeah, because I see those as two different things. I'm just curious if that was intentional, or if we were talking the same, okay.
Yep. I think generally, one is, is winning in this area look like growing our fund balance? Is that what the true goal is, to make sure we're solvent or something like that? Or is the process around adopting a balanced budget what's important? Now, both of those are tied. Adopting a balanced or a surplus budget will grow your fund balance and so on, but they're two different ways in which to look at.
Now, can, can maybe C and D?
Fund balance and healthcare?
Because my change in the healthcare is going to, is going to fix our fund balance. Would, would that be, I, I know what you're saying, would that be something significant there?
I think the way we're looking at it is we, because we don't have the fund balance to continue to support our healthcare fund, we need us, we need to truly have a self-funded healthcare plan. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so I heard no combined, seems like all a little bit different. Any other questions for them on what any of these mean?
Clarify H a little for me?
Enrollment, mitigate decline?
We're looking at, what can we do to help our enrollment? I mean, this last week, we did well for success. What else can we do to help our enrollment? We know we have, we reached the plateau of 45,000, that's plateau, we reached 45,000. What's our next step? How can we do to increase enrollment?
What we discussed is, we know that kids aren't being born, so we're going to continue to have declining enrollment, because we're graduating more students that are coming in. But already knowing what that projected number is, keeping that number and not losing more. So, you know, different initiatives to where we're keeping the students that we should have versus, you know, going somewhere else.
Great. I have a specific question. Customer service, faculty, community, stakeholders?
It's the same as the one above, I believe, staff experience?
Okay, so it's about staff experience?
Yep.
So are you okay allowing it?
And I know that we put, I know we split them, right? Student experience, we just put them all together, but.
Okay.
By keeping the other two.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then does anyone have any question on what teacher incentive allotment is?
Actually, I like that you broke out the different experiences, because I think when you bring in the community, part of community satisfaction is going to help mitigating enrollment. If we upset the community with anything that we do, they may take their students elsewhere. And so I appreciate that they were broken out into a separate group.
Sorry, say that again? Are you, are you saying you would want, I guess the question is...
Well, it's, I'll defer to those, because they're the ones that put them on the board, but I appreciated that community was a separate stakeholder group that we needed to focus on from a satisfaction perspective.
Sure, no, no.
So I think what he's saying is that he wants J back. Sounds like...
Well, we didn't put J in ours.
I know, yeah.
Right, but I appreciated, as they went through their answers and listed them, I appreciated that it was separate. It's something that I hadn't, I hadn't looked at before.
So he is saying the same thing that Manny said? He liked that community was listed separately. We have student. We'll get to that soon. If, if it's on yours, we'll add it. But if they said it's combined in student and staff experience, then we will follow that.
Yeah, I'm not advocating to edit back, that was your list.
No, what Ben is saying, what Ben is saying, because we said it's golden, right Ben?
I'm saying, y'all make the decision whether to...
That was their point on, on customer service, right? That was Paul and Maribel's point.
Mr. Getta started by saying he had the right answer, and then he changed it, so.
Alright, no more questions on this, it sounds like. We will come to the next group.
Good job.
Go ahead, sir.
So we went a little bit more broad.
Okay.
But I think it's going to be encompassing of some of these. The first one that we had was financial stability.
Okay.
A way that we defined that was getting back to a, a healthy fund balance. But there was also some of those, those other mitigating effects that came into that. When you look at different investment portfolios, the healthcare, we look at everything that comes with that. We just kind of assumed that all of that was going to be wrapped into financial stability. And getting back to that point. The second one was continue increasing community engagement. The town halls and the listening meetings and the community meetings are, are a win. And how do we continue to engage the community where they're at versus waiting for them to come to us? And then underneath that as well, also, you know, community engagement. But the advisory committees like FOAC or the benefits advisory committee, and leveraging existing, I don't like calling people resources or assets, but they bring so much expertise to the table that otherwise we wouldn't get in the same room to help tackle some of these issues. And so all of that kind of falls under community engagement umbrella. The third one we had was quality staff retention efforts. That doesn't always necessarily mean pay and benefits packages. That could be job satisfaction, workload, any personal or professional development support. You know, I think President Nahara brought up a point where pay and benefits nice, but that's not why people choose to stay or go. What are those other intangibles that we as a district can do to retain our best, whether it's bus drivers or custodial staff, right? Not just teachers, counselors, whoever that is, like what does that look like? And then the fourth one was update and modernize facilities and equipment so that as we get healthy and as we get back to where we want to be, we have the infrastructure to properly support it.
Okay, so I heard four different ones. Financial stability, specifically starting with fund balance, but being all-inclusive to what helps us get there. Community engagement and some examples that we were talking about and referring to are town halls, listening, advisory committees, quality staff retention efforts, and facilities and equipment modernization.
Yes, sir.
Questions for them? All right, final group, bring us home.
So as, just for custom context, as folks were kind of listing their things, we took, we modified our list just to make sure that it didn't sound repetitive, but safety is one of them, and we'll just leave it at that because it is very, it's broad.
Safety for whom?
For students, teachers, folks that work for the district. Stability with a focus on governance. And I think it goes back to some comments that Trustee Macias has said before in the past about implementing systems in place that last longer than, you know, us as, that's right, than us being here. Extracurricular activities is one of them as well, and innovation.
Okay.
With regard to the extracurricular, what I had stated is that I don't want us to not ever be competitive at a state level, because I think our district is amazing when it comes to extracurricular activity and being competitive, because I think that's what keeps our kids here.
Are you, so are you, when you're saying competitive, I hear something different. What we have currently for extracurriculars, and then we'll come back to innovation, is that this one is focused on extracurriculars, specifically about percentage of students involved. What I'm hearing you say is actually extracurriculars is important, but it's not necessarily about students involved, it's the achievements of those extracurriculars. Competitiveness, is that accurate?
And part of the discussion that we had, and feel free to chime in if you think that I am wrong, but we tailored it specifically to fine arts and athletics.
Okay.
But if you want to add something?
No, I think, I think I'd go back to the number of kids involved as opposed to, I think that's more important for these purposes, because our kids are just going to be good because they're good. We have amazing coaches, we have amazing, that's going to come. But I think the motivator that keeps them coming to school is what I am referring to, not the competitive, not the UIL.
Okay.
Not that part. So for me, I think it's more the B.
Okay, thank you. Innovation, finish what you were talking about around what you meant by innovation?
No, I mean, one of the things that I was sharing with Alice was, you know, focusing on the goals that we have without leaving out the idea of being innovative on methods and systems that can be implemented to achieve those goals. But at the same time, and I think it ties back with innovation, is being ambitious and being visionary on how that is achieved.
Okay. Questions on what they mean by any of these?
One thing I could share is that when we discuss bold actions, that was exactly our same thought process is how can we be innovative, how can we take bold actions? And we just gave the example of TIA. That is something innovative and bold that we could possibly learn to bring back, but it was in the same thinking that you all had.
Would, what I'm hearing is suggestion, tell me if this meets both of those, which is innovative bold actions such as teacher incentive allotment. Does that work with what you all meant as well as with what you meant by innovation, or no?
I don't know. I probably need to hear, I would have to hear more discussion, just because I don't know.
Thoughts?
I didn't hear you tell me.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just, I'm not sure. Just because I would probably need to hear more discussion. I would be interested in hearing more discussion from my colleagues to see how they interpret it.
Okay. But let me, before we open up to the floor, did you all, and you're talking about innovation, methods and systems to achieve goals, et cetera. Did you all have any examples that came to mind that you're thinking about that could maybe help shed light, and we'll see if it's how they were thinking about it?
Well, I'll say that when, when, right, when Trustee Woodcraft talked about facilities and equipment modernization, you know, Alice said it's innovation. I could see how that correlates a little bit.
And this is why I'm a press, so like it's one thing to say broadly, but we got to be able to get specific about it. Here's what innovation looks like. I would say most districts would say we want to modernize facilities. What about modernizing facilities would make that innovative versus just simply modernizing facilities? And that's an open question, I don't know. So.
I might be able to help tie some of these together. So when we're talking facilities and equipment modernization, we have a couple of things that we're dealing with specifically where we have kindergarten classrooms without air conditioning, but we have some state-of-the-art culinary arts facilities, all in the same district. And so part of that is updating and modernizing basic infrastructure and HVAC systems, but also, if you walk into a barber shop, it's a caro high, it is a barber shop, it's not a classroom with a chair. And so as we continue to develop some of these different, or CTE redesigns, or however we want to classify that, hypothetically, we bring in a new program. Well, what facility are we putting them into? Are we going to put them into an elementary school wing that was built in the 1960s and make it work, or are we going to have, you know, kind of this modernized facility for them to work with? But I think that ties into bold. Could we reuse an older building and just update it? We could do that. If we're looking at quality staff retention and things like the TEI, the TIA, I think those two tie hand in hand. And so I think it's, it may be taking a innovative, courageous approach to some existing things we already do, but doing them differently than other folks do it, while also truly being innovative with let's do something that nobody else has done yet. And so I think they may be separate, but there's still some, there's some overlap in the Venn diagram here, I think, when we talk bold and innovative on where that approach, where that approach is to meet the middle. I threw all kinds of mud to water, didn't I? All cloudy now.
Let me add to the narrative. Something that could resonate with a lot of people. You may have to be repurposing the school. A way to do that is to make it a school. If you close it, the worst thing you can do is have a closed building unless you're going to sell it. But if you turn it into a STEM school that's going to attract kids from other districts, that helps you with revenue, it helps you modernize the facility, it helps create, you know, if it's, whether it's a Montessori school or some kind of specialty school that would attract families from other districts. That's an example of thinking differently to solve a problem, because now you get their ADA, you get their kids, and you get a specialty program that your kids could also have. So I can see where you're going with this, but at some point, you need to go from the abstract to, and you have to have a system to set it up. Like when we did public school choice, we ended up with a biomedical school on the campus of UT Southwestern, but it didn't happen by design. We went to the Stanford School of Design and Thinking to help give people seed money to come up with ideas so that then these would have some viable opportunity in the future. So, but if you make it something that you expect, it's amazing how smart your people are and what they'll come up with. But they got to have, they can't, they can't read your, they can't read your mind. You have to have, come up with some kind of words that will help drive the narrative.
And if I may, the way I'm thinking about it is my evaluations will be based on this. So how do we quantify innovative, being innovative or being bold? How do we, how are we going to, what are we going to base that on? Am I right in my thinking with that?
Yeah, I think it's one thing to say we want to be bold, it's another thing to get really clear about what boldness looks like and what I, where I would push this board would be. And so we'll spend some time here if this raises to the top. Let me tie this together in two ways. Number one, from what Trustee Woodcraft said, my assumption, you tell me if I'm seeing this incorrectly, is making sure that we have working HVAC in all of our classrooms is something necessary but not innovative. Is that, would you agree?
Yes.
Okay, but redoing our CTE program into these like state-of-the-art new classrooms may count as innovative. Would that be accurate? Or no? Okay, so then what I would recommend we do, it sounds like, so I'm going to, what I put up here is like essentially if we value boldness and taking steps that haven't been taken before, we have some examples, it could be TIA, we haven't done that yet here, it could be just any kind of new ideas, and we remove the more general one around innovation, let that be the case. What we will do, because we will have, if it raises, it might not even rise to the top. Some of these other things might rise to the top first, and we shouldn't spend a lot of time digging into that if it's not going to rise to the top. But if it does, then we will have a conversation at that point about, okay, where do we want and need to see innovation first, and then that could kind of give some clarity around this. So if you all are all right with the innovation one generally being put into innovative bold actions with some examples to be defined later if it rises to the top, then I will go ahead and delete this last one if that works. Okay, we have attendance, extracurriculars, fund balance, self-funded healthcare plans, staff experience, student experience, financial solvency, enrollment, innovative bold actions, financial stability, fund balance, community engagement, staff retention, facilities, equipment modernization, safety and stability. Are there any here that anyone would propose combining that might be the same?
C and J?
I see C as fund balance and J as financial stability, leaning on fund balance. Is everyone okay with combining those? I will delete the more general one. Okay, any other ones?
This also applies to that five-year, that recommended five-year vision as well.
Uh, yes.
It's hand in hand.
And then what usually happens is you will monitor this, and what changes is like these are not going to be SMART goals. You're not going to set a SMART goal on safety, and that's going to be your over one. What you're going to essentially do is specify that this is the value. We need to make sure student safety is the case. Superintendent and his team will go back and talk about, all right, what are the most meaningful ways to measure student safety and staff safety? Here is what we think we are, it's discipline rate, it's this, it's that. Those will become your progress measures, which don't go on a five-year timeframe. Those are usually one to three years, and you'll look at them every year and be like, okay, did that tell us what we need, or do we need to make adjustments? So you'll actually get to see those a little bit more frequently. All right. Looks like we have them all. No more questions here. We are going to repeat the process with the paper. So again, just as a reminder, just to make sure we're all on the right page this time. 15, 12. I'll write them here. 15, 12, 8, 5, and 3. And the order, the 15, you will put the letter of the one that is most important to you. 12 will be the second most important one, and so on down to 3 being your fifth most important. And then as you finish, raise your hand, and my trustee assistant, Dr. Nahosa, will come and collect. Can everyone see the screen?
Yes, sir.
If we got everybody, let's go.
C, 15.
Yep.
G, 12.
Yep.
H, 8. J, 5. I, 3.
Bingo.
C, 15. D, 12. F, 8. E, 5. H, 3. G, 15. I, 12. B, 8. K, 5. N as in never, 3. P is a dog, 15. C, 12. I, 8. N as in never, 5. M as in like you baby, 3. C, 15. D as a dog, 12. N as in never, 8. G, 5. J, 3. C, 15. L, 12. K, 8. P is a dog, 5. M as in like you, 3. C, 15. D, 8, dog. J, 8. K, 5. I, 3.
Someone gave up some points on that one.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Column seven has two eights.
Were there two eights written on that last one, or is one of them 12?
P is a dog, 12.
All right, thank you. Good catch, all right.
C, 15. F, 12. D, 8. D is a dog, 8. H, 5. A, 3.
All right, we are going to have quite a bit of... All right. It looks like we have two that rise greatly to the forefront that is far and away your top ones. First is financial stability and fund balance with seven out of the eight folks ranking it in the top one or two, followed by a self-funded healthcare plan. So very clear on those two. Then we, it looks like we have a set of... Then we, looks like we have a set of four. We have like, you know, quite a few between financial solvency, balanced budget, so something different than fund balance, but maybe in the same vein. The question is gonna be open about, do we need both of them? Do we want both of them? If so, great, if not, okay. Innovative bold actions, community engagement, staff experience, all are above the twenty mark. So at most, we can have five. And same applies, if you have five, expect only twenty percent focus on each as opposed to having two really important ones that we just knock out of the park. We have two options here. We can pause and allow people to kind of open up for a little discussion here. Actually, let's do that, let's have some discussion about this and then we'll do another vote if we need another vote.
Let me also add some clarity to this, especially with the financial thing. And there are some things that are very quantifiable. Just like, how do you determine financial, um, financial stability? Well, the state has the first rating. And even though it's not gonna be good now, it does make sure the first, to get a good score on first, you can't have too much money spent on administration. Uh, it, it, it takes the funding codes like function, function eleven, function forty-one. It tells you how much you should have as a ratio. Um, and same thing with, it's one thing to adopt the balanced budget, but then is your amended budget balance? See, that's the big thing. So you gotta make sure you're clear as you set up these measures. Dallas in two thousand and eight had, October of two thousand and eight, Dallas had thirty-two million dollars in fund balance. And we had a sixty-four million dollar hole. I had to lay off a thousand teachers in October. That was the only way to get out of it. In the middle of the year, not at the end of the year, in the middle of the year. When I left Dallas, because we had these metrics, because Ben and the board held me accountable, when I left Dallas in twenty twenty-two, they had a billion dollars in reserve. See, so, but we had quantifiable measures. So some of this stuff is very quantifiable and you can hold the staff accountable. Some of this stuff is not as quantifiable. So as you think about that, that's just something to consider. A self, you know, so two of them rise to the top, but financial solvency is very close to financial stability. I mean, if you do one, you're gonna have the other. So, so I think that if you do the financial piece well, and we got a lot of people with a lot of experience between Andrew, Kim and myself, that can help you set up the right metrics. But then you gotta think about, okay, what else is really gonna be important to this board? So as you start having this conversation, like some of those are easy to write down and someone's gotta execute them. Make sure that they get executed. Others, you know, like engagement and all, those are different. So just be thinking about that as you come up with your, whatever Ben decides to take you next.
And this board doesn't have to come up with what those best measures are. We want the board to be as specific as possible if we have something in mind. If we're saying, you know, when I see people, it's like, we really won't care about good communication. But then when you really press on them, they're like, well, our parents aren't hearing enough from us. So we want to be as specific as possible, but then we will rely on the administration to bring back, all right, here's the most meaningful metrics, which you all will have to look at and be like, yes.
Would it be worthwhile to entertain the idea of combining C and G under a little more broad term, like fiscal responsibility? With the understanding that balanced budget, fund balance, making sure the departments are funded appropriately, staffing levels are accurate, like all of those other things that we'll quantify later, later will fall under that umbrella?
I agree, but I would say combining all three, C, D and G.
Well, so I will say like, there are, the way these are written is pretty, the self-funded healthcare plan is a very specific thing. So that should remain separate as a specific thing, so you can monitor the progress of that. If that's important and it seems like it is. The fund balance, you can say, I think there's a couple of options here. The board has to make a determination, is fund balance what's important to us? That's what winning looks like. Is a balanced budget that we approve important to us? Are both of them important to us? And in which case, keep both of them. Or we care about financial solvency or financial like stewardship, but we're gonna defer to the superintendent to tell us what are the most meaningful metrics. So that's really the combination. Because I would not want us to say, let's combine it into financial stewardship, give it to the administration and they come back with something that doesn't include fund balance and we say, well, it needs to be fund balance. So like I would say, if it needs to be fund balance, leave it as fund balance. If it needs to be balanced budget, leave it as balanced budget. And if you're okay with having this discussion to kind of figuring that out, then broaden it and allow them to come make a recommendation to you.
Ben, I have a question in regards to, when you mentioned self-funded, are you talking self-funded that is gonna affect our budget? Is that it or just the healthcare for the employees? It's the healthcare for the employees, but the healthcare fund, making sure that what the employees put in and what the district contribution is, makes a whole, uh, self-funded program. We don't have to be contributing from our fund balance to supplement that. If between those two, we can have a healthy healthcare fund.
I think, I think it does make sense to combine C and G because if we don't combine C and G and all we do, if we say balanced budgets are important, then we're never gonna add to our fund balance because a balanced budget is different than an excess budget.
That's right.
And that's what we need, we need an excess budget.
And I'll just take that one step further. We, we passed a balanced budget, but we're still not financially stable because of our fund balance, so. Yeah.
So the proposal that I hear on the table is combine them as some, some sort of, maybe, I think, um, Brian, I think you had good word, better words for it than financial stewardship, but I don't know.
I use fiscal responsibility.
Fiscal responsibility.
Because I, I think it's gonna be a hybrid option.
Yeah.
Right, like.
And then what we're actually saying is, you're hearing this discussion, community and superintendent, that things we're thinking about are fund balanced, balanced budget, the first rating that got raised. But we are okay with you all telling us your recommendation for the best ways to measure it and then we'll have that conversation at that time. Is that accurate here?
I, I think it is, right? And, and I think it, it helps mitigate some concern where, sure, we could increase the fund balance at the expense of all of these other things. But now we have fifty million dollars more in the fund balance, but we wiped away seventeen CTE programs to do it. I don't think that's gonna be acceptable, right? And so I think leaving that ambiguity, um, for the staff and the experts to really look through it, um, and figure out, how do we do this efficiently, effectively, um, smartly? Uh, and, and then we can kind of nickel and dime from there. So I know we want to be specific, Ben, but I think in this particular case, I think a little bit of ambiguity will actually help us.
It's totally fine. My only point on ambiguity is if it's ambiguity because we want to trust the staff to bring us back the recommendation, that's totally fine. What we just want to avoid is where we are ambiguous here and then they come bring us something back and we're like, well, that's not what we meant. So that's the only thing. So this, it sounds like we're good. We care about these things, but we want to know what the recommendation is for the best one? Great, then that, that makes total sense.
You know, um, one comment that I would like to add under fiscal responsibility, particularly addressing a balanced budget. Um, I, I think it's very important for us to be careful there because that's right. Uh, um, we did adopt a balanced budget. But I know that resources and staff are spread very thin. You know, uh, just the other day I was having a conversation with Ms. Stiles and she let me know that right now the positions that are needed equal to about six million dollars. And so when, when you talk about a balanced budget, that's fine, but at what cost? And so I think that that's, we have to be very careful on how, because a budget is a moral document. It's, um, you know, and I, I just think that there has, we just have to be very, maybe if there's a possibility to define it a little bit better, not sure. Um, but, um, I just, I think we have to be very careful on, on how we, we frame that.
What I hear you saying is, we don't want a balanced budget just for the sake of a balanced budget. Because there might be reasons why we might not need a balanced budget over a year. So the, the value isn't necessarily a balanced budget, but the value is fiscal responsibility. If we're gonna have an unbalanced budget in one year, we can't do it at the expense of like going and solving.
And I think it's, it's important to take into consideration, for example, this past year, the only reason why there was a balanced budget, aside from, uh, reduction in force and, and, and other cuts that were made here and there. Was also because the district, along with other districts, received twenty-six, or at least for us, twenty-six point one million dollars from the state of Texas. Um, and I know that those are specific for, uh, for, for pay increases and whatnot, but that, that most certainly did help. Um, otherwise, if that money would have not come through, then we would have been in a different situation. And I'm not sure if that assessment is right. If, 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 if it's not, let me, no.
Yeah, no, that's exactly right there. That's exactly right. After the pay raises and so forth, we had about eight million dollars left from the, money from the state and that's what we used to close the gap to balance the budget.
Okay.
And just to give feedback for the first rating, I personally, and you'll have to convince me, um, we, we were celebrating, um, exemplar, or whatever the first rating was. But yet we were, technically it wasn't very clear or transparent, I hate to use this transparent because we use it all the time. Um, until now, are we gonna get the failing grade? So whenever you all come up with a metrics, just know that for me, you'll just have to convince me because I don't know if I truly, um, believe in that fully.
Yeah, I was actually gonna see if we can remove the first rating from, uh, for this year because it's not gonna be good.
Is fiscal responsibility, the soup will recommend what the most effective metrics are to this board and this board will have this whole conversation, but with more data and elements as opposed to name. Right? Okay, we have two very clear, far and away, top constraints, guardrails that we need, achieve these goals that are important, but not at the expense of our fiscal responsibility and our healthcare sustainability. Does anyone want to make a strong recommendation to add any additional ones, knowing that'll take focus on it? It's also not a problem to say, those are our two priorities, let's figure those out first and then we'll consider other ones. So I will open it up to the board, we'll start with President Nahara and then we'll come to Manny.
I just want to add community engagement. I know that overall, it, it's fourth and not third. However, from the community feedback in both the vision and the values, uh, community engagement was, um, you know, in the top five in both. And so while we had to rank order them, you know, here, and so we had to make choices, it's still in the top five, uh, among us. And it was in the top five in both vision and values for the community.
Okay, I have a, someone advocating to add the community engagement one to it. Manny, do you wanna, you could either respond to that or just share whatever else you have in mind?
Well, I was just gonna place an emphasis on G, stability and governance systems. Um, I think that, uh, I see that as an opportunity more than anything else. Um, for us to contribute to the long-term success of this district. Um, I think that we've seen when those, we've seen what happens when those systems are not in place. Um, and so, you know, what can we implement, whether it be policies, procedures? In this case, it would be policies that regardless of whether Mr. Vasquez is here, um, regardless of whether we are here, um, that there's that to always fall back on. And, and, and strengthen the current systems that we have in place and that way they're a lot more difficult to dismantle.
I don't think, I don't think governance systems, because this is the governing body, right? I don't think governance systems is a district or a superintendent goal. I think that comes up or should come up, if it's important to us as a board, that should come up in our board operating procedures, that should come in our self-evaluation. Um, but I don't think it should come up here and I don't think it's something that the superintendent can enforce. Because governance is up to us.
One thing that might be helpful, because I, this is a really good point. We haven't dug into it, we'll do it during the two-day state workshop a little bit more. There's actually two types of constraints or guardrails. The ones we're talking about here are about the district. What do we make, like the district's gotta have a fund, et cetera. There will also be something called board constraints, that this board will set on itself and decide. And so to this point is, one of those very much aligns, if it's specifically about governance processes, like this board can say, we will not operate without strong governance practices. You all will get to set those, that'll be a little bit down the line. So if it's strictly on governance, that would be the perfect place for those and it's probably a very common one. If this is more about a particular type of district policy, like, you know, teacher evaluation or something, then it would be a worthwhile conversation for this. So I'll just, you know, with that, you can choose to.
No, I agree, thank you for bringing that up, that makes total sense.
And I think the only, um, I don't know what else to call it, but advantage or insight that I had, Manny, is that, that, that we've had, um, some of us already went through some of the, a portion of the LSG training. And so we've already learned the difference in the board and the district constraints. Um, whereas for all of us, we'll be learning about that here in November, so.
For the sake of, um, discussion and argument about a third one, there's actually a third one up there, it's just disparate. If we took stakeholder satisfaction and you, you have sub elements in it. First of all, that's the community, uh, the student experience, the staff experience, safety. Uh, a, a, a lot of that, and even some, at some point, enrollment, uh, it could fall under that umbrella. Let me just tell you, be very specific. Twenty percent of what I got measured on was stakeholder satisfaction. And out of that twenty percent, five percent was what the students said about me, or me as the district. Uh, five percent is what the, uh, parents said. Five percent is what the staff said. Five percent was what the taxpayers said. And we define taxpayer as people who did not have kids in the schools, but they vote, paid taxes. And we actually used a pollster to gather that data, an independent pollster that I never got to see, and you have ways to measure that. So now it is multiple, it is the, it is stakeholder satisfaction and you define who the stakeholders are. And then you measure it, do surveys, we use Panorama for the kids, we use another instrument for the teachers and staff, and then we, we use a pollster. So even though that is, you can make that somewhat quantifiable, but you have to start with a baseline and then it takes time.
Let me, everything here is going to be quantifiable. Whatever you choose, even if you choose the most, the, the broadest one of innovative bold actions, there will be a quantifiable way that this board will have to come to to measure it. Um, you can measure all of these things. I think the point is really to hone in on what are the most important right now. Um, and I will take a slight disagreement to Doc. I think, you know, when we try to measure everything in Dallas, what I can tell you we spend almost no time on is any of those things. We get the measures and they go into it, but we don't talk about it, we don't actually focus on it because we have so many different ones. So it's, you know, I would just encourage the board to really think about what is the most important and if it's all of them, great, but that's four different things or five different things. So, um, the more specific it can be, the more growth you will see.
So, uh, I almost feel like it doesn't need to be said, but I'm gonna say it anyways. I, I want to make sure that people aren't hearing what we're not saying.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think sometimes in, and I'll use social media as an example, right? You put a Facebook post that says you like apples and, oh my God, you hate oranges and bananas and educate yourself, I'm literally shaking, right? Like, that's not what I said, I said I really like apples. You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and so what I want people to know is like, I don't want you to hear what we're not saying. Like, we're not saying student and staff safety isn't a priority for us.
Absolutely.
Like, it's absolutely a priority for us. Um, and regardless of whether we add a third one or a fourth one, uh, I think all of these up here are extremely valuable, extremely important. And whether we choose to make them one of our priorities or not, they're all gonna be involved in everything we do over the next year. Um, and, and I don't.
You are a hundred percent right about, I think this, to drive this point home, it doesn't mean nobody's going to pay attention to safety and security. It means superintendent, make sure safety and security is there and we'll address it if there are any issues, but otherwise, we'll trust that you and the team have that together. You're absolutely right about that.
Ben, actually, and what Dr. Nahosa was saying, uh, safe and secure learning environment was one of our district, uh, strategies that we had. We would, we would, um,
We would rate the superintendent and also the community engagement. I see community engagement, I'm sorry, student experience, safety, I'm sorry, staff experience, student experience, all the same with community engagement. All in one, tied in, also, what with the safety, student and staff environment, all together as one.
So is that two or one?
Well, I see the, I see the student experience, staff experience, and the safety of students and staff can be all in one.
So add another one between B and C that says?
Not between B and C, but we have the student experience.
Oh, no, and I'm just saying, add it, and then we know, then we'll say what's included in it.
So it would be stakeholder engagement, and it would be, it would be stakeholder engagement. And just like, as you mentioned, it would have safety, and it would have the student, faculty, staff, and community experience, which are the climate surveys that you mentioned.
So I'm hearing different things. I'm hearing engagement. But it doesn't sound like you're measuring engagement. It sounds like you're measuring experience, not engagement. Engagement would be engaging folks, like these town halls, listening advisory. It doesn't sound like we're doing engagement. It sounds like we do care about some experience, okay. But safety is not an engagement or a perception of experience. It's, because then the question is, are you measuring, does this board care about how people feel about safety? Or does it care about incidence of safety, and how do you measure it? Like, this is the hesitation about like trying to combine everything. This is a meaningful conversation. Which of those are what we really care about to measure? Is it the experience and how people perceive it? Is it about the engagement opportunities they have? Is it about how people perceive their safety? Is it about some quantitative measure of safety incidences decreasing? Which of those are most important and rising?
I think in our conversation, we're mainly speaking about like that climate survey, so it's that personal experience of safety. So there would be a question, how safe, you know, do you feel sending your first grader to school? So it would be more of an experience. Do you agree? Yeah, that's the conversation.
It could be left in.
So student experience.
And I think that can tie with community engagement. And if we think back to public comment the past couple of board meetings, there was issues with bus routes on the east side by Carrasco. I think some of that could tie to student safety. And it may not be directly impacted by decisions that the district makes. It could be things that the city does to help mitigate. But I think having community stakeholder engagement is going to be an important piece in that. Now, do we combine it and then make it more broad and make it harder to define, which is what Ben's trying to get us away from? I don't know, but I think there's a very layered approach. Once we go to community stakeholder, staff, student engagement, experience, there's a lot of layers to that onion.
So trying to track with all y'all, I'm kind of moving some things around here. But I've heard it's two different things here so far. So one is, like, we want to know how students experience their time in Socorro ISD, specifically with an eye towards safety. And then I've heard, part of this is also, how do we engage the wider community in these conversations? Is that what I'm hearing accurately?
Well, I still venture to say that experience and engagement are one and the same because, and that's why we went to stakeholder experience. Because if it's stakeholder experience, our stakeholders are our students, it is our parents, it is our staff, it is our community. And we already know that if we're not engaging with our community, then their experience with us is going to be poor. And if we do a survey, the survey's going to show that. It's what, you know, so the community engagement opportunities that we have there, town halls, listening, the advisory committees, those are the means to the end, which is a positive assessment by our stakeholders in their experience with us.
So then what I hear you saying is actually, it's not engagement that we necessarily care about for the sake of engagement. It's how people experience Socorro ISD. And part of that might be engagements, but we really care about how they experience it. Is that what I hear you saying?
Yes, because even, you know, if we have, if we have 100 uninformative town halls, then did we meet the community engagement? Sure, we did. We had 100 town halls. That's great. We had 20 people show up at every single one, but what was the experience? Well, it was terrible because we didn't share anything.
And this is, this is going to be a point. So like, and this is, this is the meat of the conversation. If this board chooses to say experience is why we do it, so we're going to pay attention to how the community experiences Socorro ISD. This board has to be okay saying, if they hear people saying like, you're not doing enough town halls, you have to be okay with saying, that's not one of our focus areas. Like, please make your voice heard on your experience. And then we'll look at that and see if there's anything else that needs to happen. Versus, if we have something around engagement, then now that is a board conversation about how do we engage? Are we doing town halls or not? So it's a different conversation in this. And the board just has to be clear about which ones they're expecting and holding Jimmy and the team accountable for. Are you going to hold him accountable for how the community experiences Socorro ISD based on a survey? Or are you going to hold him accountable for the engagement sessions that he does?
With throwing the third word into the mix, like satisfaction, twisted up instead of experience and engagement? How satisfied are you with the level of engagement, this specific experience? And it's still touchy-feely, so it's going to be subjective to the person filling out the questionnaire or survey. But I think it could still give us some objective measures to look at.
It'll be subjective, however, we will have good metrics through a climate survey like we would do, like we talked about. And quite honestly, I think, I mean, the, I know there's a way to get metrics for the bold action. I just don't know what it would be, to be honest. I don't know what the metrics would look like.
Let's see if it comes back to the top before we get there. So right now, we've got, okay, so I, you know, and we don't have to decide tonight for sure which one it is. You can kind of mess with these, et cetera. I now hear, based on this conversation, I've heard a few different things added. So tell me how the board is feeling. I heard student experience, specifically with an eye to safety. That sounds like people are saying, yes, that is one of the ones we want to make sure. Is that an accurate assessment?
I think we're talking, I may have misunderstood, but student experience, safety would be just one component of the student experience, correct?
And on there, you have community satisfaction slash experience, but I think that a better way to phrase it on row six is stakeholder satisfaction experience. Because we're talking about engaging community, taxpayers, like Dr. Nahosa said, staff, and students.
Okay, let's stick with the student one real fast. So student experience, not just safety, but including safety.
Yes.
So that sounds like folks are saying yes on that one. Is that more or less? Does anyone disagree with that? I think that.
I just disagree, and every single one of us, I think, over here is saying that student experience, including safety, is part of stakeholder satisfaction experience.
Yes.
Okay, what I, okay, so here's what I'm going to say. If you come to this broad stakeholder engagement, you're not going to get 15 different survey metrics as part of that stakeholder engagement. You get three progress measures. So what you should expect to see, if you have these separate, you're going to have one on student experience. Your progress measures might be, how do students perceive their learning environment? How do they perceive their safety? How do they perceive the supports that we provide them outside of their classrooms? You're going to get a deeper view about the student experience there. If you do stakeholder, you might get overall student responses on a climate survey, overall staff responses on a climate survey, overall parent responses on a climate survey. You will not get to dig in deeper than that, and you got to be okay with that. If you set it broad, expect broad responses. If you set it specific, expect to get more in the weeds. That's a board choice. We could definitely do this as stakeholder satisfaction, and it could be those three, but expect very broad-based, talking about our students, our parents, and our, like, everybody else as part of this. That's just a board choice. So if you're good with that, we can move it to stakeholder and include that. Or do you want a more deep focus on particular elements of stakeholder?
I'm just a bit confused there because then if we say we want a bit more detail, that means student, staff, and parent, and then we already have three constraints there.
Yeah. And what I'm saying is, I would challenge the board to think about, if you want everything, then be okay with a super-high level one and keep stakeholder. If you care about diving in deeper, prioritize. What's the one of those or two of those that's going to be most important now? It doesn't mean the stakeholders don't matter, or that this doesn't matter, but like, what's the most important today that we want to start with?
I think a good initial step is to keep it broad.
Okay.
As there's more engagement, there's opportunity to modify and get it more into the weeds.
I hear yes, and I hear keeping it broad, and all right, I like it. So stakeholder satisfaction experience? All right, look at that. We have three. Anything else that we're missing or want to make a proposal to kind of move up in this? Or do we want to start with those and then see where they land and see if we need anything else?
That's it, right there. Start with those.
All right, y'all. Congratulations. What comes next? So we have four goals and three guardrails or constraints here. What, unless the board wants to dig in more about specific language, my recommendation would be superintendent and team, we're in here listening to this conversation. They heard where you're at about this. What they will do is, myself, Dr. Nahosa, Mr. Kim, will work with them on actually finding the baseline data about this, some of the recommendations on what to measure. And once they get that in a draft form, actually bringing it back to the board, either at another workshop or just at your regular night meeting, and actually showing you, here would be the goal. Here's how we would recommend setting the goal on eighth grade Algebra I. Here would be the progress measures that we think are most important that the board should be monitoring. Same things with these. Here's stakeholder satisfaction. Here would be our progress measures that we recommend. And then in that, we'll have another conversation, and the board can again say, that's not quite what we meant by that. We think we want to change it to this, or we think we do want to add the graduation goal, or we think we should split out the stakeholder engagement. We'll be able to have that conversation. So that's what's coming next. Any questions on that? Amazing. The last thing that I just want to have, which is the last thing on our agenda, is the implementation plan. This is a small document. I'm going to zoom in for a little bit here. You're going to have some time. I just want to kind of walk you through what is happening. As part of this, make sure, want to make sure that this board has a roadmap for kind of what we will be doing as we move forward with Lone Star Governance and kind of how these are. You have, I mean, everything I say is a coaching experience. Ultimately, I'm not on the board. Y'all get to make the decisions. But this kind of gives you an overview of what we will do each quarter if we stay on track, but it's something that you all could update as you see fit. So this quarter, really thinking about priority setting, which we're doing here, reviewing operating procedures, and then do a baseline after we have kind of our, the November meeting about, you know, where are we at today? And as we move into quarter four, you should have your priorities set. You should be clear, and by quarter four, this board is looking at actually, not only adopting them officially, starting to monitor them and see what our progress is every single month. Start thinking about what do we want a superintendent evaluation process to look like that aligns to those priorities? If we said those priorities are most important, how are we making sure the superintendent evaluation ties to those priorities? Then by the new year in 2026, thinking about budget alignment. All of our systems should start to align to those priorities. How are we thinking about adopting our budget in alignment with priorities? How are we thinking about our board self-constraints, which we talked about around like building those governance procedures and processes and this? Doing self-assessment and starting to do the monitoring work. And then by quarter two, we're starting to look at the broader policies. Which ones do we need to keep? Which ones do we need to amend? Which ones are actually getting in our way? How do we start adapting and adjusting those? And then starting to build out, you know, two-way communication. How do we have these ongoing conversations with our community about our progress and what comes next? How do we think about building an academy to train new trustees or even community members who might want to be trustees one day? So people understand what to expect about what the board gets. So that's just a quick overview. You will have this emailed to you tonight. It will be posted on your board agenda. But ultimately, what I'd love to leave this with is, you individually read through it and are like, hey, I think we should, something's missing here. I think we should do this. Or I have a question about what that is. I'll be available to answer questions about it. And then we ask that the board adopt it to kind of show the roadmap of the direction we're going at your regular night meeting. So with that, any questions there? Thank you all for that. President, I'll pass it back to you.
Anybody have any last final, last final words? How's that for redundancy? All right. Well, Ben, everybody, thank you so much. I really appreciate everybody's participation, everybody's input. These sessions are useless if we're not willing to participate and share our ideas and be open to sharing and listening, and certainly to the staff in the back who now have to carry this work forward and come back to us with recommendations. But thank you for being here and spending your afternoon and evening with us. With that, there being no further business before this board. We are adjourned. The date is Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025, and the time is 7:25 PM.